All right.
No, I've already got you did it.
Okay.
Michelle, you ready? Jessica, I'm missing Jessica.
Make sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Are getting used to it? No. Are we good?
You're very good.
Here you are.
This is very last minute.
I see that. All right. Good morning. I'm going to call the Lake County Board of Elections and Voter Registration Meeting, or Board of Elections Meeting to Order. If we could all please stand for the pledge if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. And to the great power of our Constitution. One nation, united in its small with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, this is a special meeting of July 30th, 2025. And it is 10, I think we started at 12:00 a.m. Michelle, roll call, please.
Our failure, is it?
Present.
Serving as proxy for.
Mike Mallon here.
And Carly is serving as a proxy for.
Presence.
That's it.
I am here. We have a quorum. All members are present in person or by proxy. And just for the record, that was Carly Brandenburg for Mr. Reed. I do notice that both chairmen are present today. And so, of course, I always like to give them the opportunity to speak if they would like to speak on any topic.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Chairman E. Meyer. Yes, sir.
On your agenda today are the consideration of the reprecincting maps. It was good public comment last time. I was glad to see falls here. I think one of the things that was clear to me in the public comment period was that there's a confusion between, the difference between reprecincting and redistricting. They're two entirely different things. And this is purely driven by the potential for cost savings, but also there are several precincts that need, that fit into the shell of the code when it relates to splitting or combining. So, that was the premise to the whole thing. I want to make sure that was clear because I think last meeting it was a little bit muddy. But thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right, we like, generally in the past, we both referred to it as precinct, I think you referred to it as reprecincting. We've talked about it as expansion, consolidation, you know, it's gone other, many terms over the years, but I think we all understand which statute we're dealing with. Okay, so, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the July 15th, 2025 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion, my clerk Brown, we have a second. Second by Ms. Brandenburg. Motion, my clerk Brown, to approve the minutes of July 15th as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next matter of new business is the map proposal discussion, one and two, which also, guess, I'm sorry, you know, we're good. So, I think, you know, we've got these two map proposals. We also have, I requested a, kind of a, where do we agree and where do we disagree? And I asked Jessica and Michelle to do that, and I appreciate their responses. So, thank you both for that. I think there's a lot of agreement, which is great. And then, there's some disagreement. So, I don't know if, let me ask this first. Is there any disagreement on the annexes?
We addressed those at the last board meeting.
So, is there anything, any board action on the annexes today? Okay. And those are, okay. So, we don't have to worry about those. Even, so, let me ask this. The agenda item under 2025 annexes, is there anything to address in that? Okay. Great. All right, so then we go down to, you know, there's a lot here, right? I mean, I think I got 400-plus pages of, I mean, it is what it is, right? And we have these in order, I have a reprecincting map listed as tab one in our, on our iPad. Does everybody see that? Is that, is that a good working list to work off of? Or is there something better?
That question would be for Michelle. This is the one that Michelle phrased up the first time, so I'm not sure if these two overlap a lot.
Okay.
This is the one that's printed out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just took a little bit of the information.
Okay, so if I, for example, if I, if we decide not to go with that listing.
I'm looking at the computer. It's listing that you can pretend it's today. The ones that's in the computer with the original, that I submitted, how I consolidated since the first plan. And then, the rest of the plan came underneath that, I believe, as first did not have like an Excel spreadsheet, it was just performed.
Yep.
So, then, what I prepared for you today was, I tried to merge them together. So, the ones that we agreed on, from the first page or most, and it says, we didn't have the data since 2025, those were removed. Then you go to the, compared to the large, the second group is larger precincts that were giving me close to the 2,000 legal limit or over the legal limit. And Jessica and I went over those, and we agreed on those. I think you're maybe making part of the record. That should get into section three. Those are going to be small precincts, under 600, and we have a treaty on some of those based on, you cannot cut, the rest of the line, you said, that on each house, lines, town, the line, and so forth, that there are certain things that we cannot cut. As an example, we think that Cedar Lake eight, it is the only one in West.
Can we get a line number, Cedar Lake eight? Thank you.
I cut that because it is the only one in Cedar Lake, this is in West Creek, so it's under 600. I could know that Cote, that's under 400, so you're into the call. There was eight.
Okay, so, given that, and thank you, Michelle, for that. Jessica, you, I assume you agree with what Michelle just said on the greens? Okay, so, given that, and one other question, I guess, just, this is housekeeping. On the, on the left side, I guess, the first column, I'll call it next to the coloring, there's a number. I'm happy to reference that when we're talking about it. That might make things easier, right? To reference that number?
In some cases, yes. As we get to page two, I will move back, I'll do the first one for, for her achievement, for mine too.
That's okay.
Some cases.
We may have to.
And then, the last.
Okay, or we can refer to it like as tan, tan, or blue, that'll be helpful. And then, if anybody wants to reference the forms that were submitted on our board packet, I know those might, those probably don't, I don't think they jive with, with this. So, like, if I'm at, like, for example, on my iPad, number three for the board packet is Cedar Lake five, but Cedar Lake five appears to be six on this sheet. Is that accurate?
If, if it's okay, I'll.
Yeah. Okay.
This is the one I typed, I think I brought it.
Yeah, I can pass it.
I take these up.
We had one? Oh, you guys have one already? We don't have this yet. You have this?
A little bit. If you're referring to them, I can.
Okay. I'm not sure either. The only thing about this is I don't see a, a number, so I'm gonna be like, but we can, let's just put it this way. If anyone wants to re, whatever you're referencing, just let the board know what you're referencing, whether it be this one or this one, and a line number, or a tab, or, you know, or if you want to reference the forms, because I noticed that each of the precincts we're going to be considering, in our board packet, has a precinct summary statement, it has, in some instances, the sense, or it has census tract, and then it has the maps, which are helpful. So, if we do want to reference a specific one that we're going to discuss today, let's try to also reference the tab in our board packet. And if someone has that handy, just let us know what that is. Okay. Thank you. That's handy, too. Get it on the old, the old way. The old-fashioned way, on paper.
There.
Okay. Wonderful. All right, so, given what's been said, is there any objection to taking, and I'm looking at, what are we gonna call this one? What do, what do, what do we want to call this? The legal size, all right, fair enough. That's good. The legal sized document, I'm looking at numbers four, five, six, nine, 13, and 15, which are Cedar Creek two, Cedar Lake three, Cedar Lake five, Hobart 16, St. John 12, and Winfield Town, is that Winfield Township? 10.
Yes.
Okay. It appears there's agreement with what to do on these, based upon the legal sheet. If there is, unless there's an objection, I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented on the legal sheet. Michelle.
You also need to reference the precinct that is affecting the rear of our right-hand corner, or do we just address the main course now?
So, I'm just referencing, I guess, what is on the left side. The sheet addresses what's gonna happen. I mean, if we want to make that record, I'm happy to do that, but this is gonna become part of the record. Okay, yeah, and I, and I want to make sure that this becomes part of the record, so that we can make sure that whoever's reviewing this has the opportunity to see what happened. So, again, I'm sorry, yes.
Proceed with the motion for essentially the staff recommendation on the splits for the numbers that you just called.
Four, five, six, nine, 13, and 15.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Brandenburg.
A second.
Second by Clerk Brown to approve the staff recommendations for lines four, five, six, nine, 13, and 15 on the legal sheet as presented. All right, is there any discussion on those? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're moving towards the bottom of page one on the legal sheet, as well as three lines on the top of page two on the legal sheet. I'll just list these line numbers, so it's clear on the record. These are under the column, Small Precincts Under 600 Active Staff Agreement. Line 16, Cedar Lake eight, line 17, Cedar Lake nine, line 18, Cedar Lake 10, line 19, Crown Point 26, line 22, East Creek Township, is that right? Eagle Creek Township, I'm sorry, two, 26, line 26 is Gary, 528, line 29 is Griffith, 17, line 32, Hobart Township, eight, 33, Hobart Township, nine, 34, Lake Station, three, 35, Lake Station, four, 35, Lake Station, five, 36, Lake Station, nine, 37, Ross Township, 20, 38, St. John, 10, 39, St. John, 13, line 14 is St. John, 17, and then I have line 14 is St. John, 18, because there are no voters, that's why they're on the same line, I assume, and they're being consolidated together. Thank you. Line 40, St. John, 19, line 41, St. John Township, three, and line 42, West Creek Township, one. Okay.
I will, I will make the same motion to proceed with the staff recommendations for the items just listed by the, by Chuck Smith.
We have a motion by Ms. Brandenburg. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, second by Ms. Angerman. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Brandenburg, second by Ms. Angerman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Now the hard stuff, or maybe not hard stuff. Now the work to be done. So, the first one, I'm gonna just, this is on page two of the legal. It is under tan number one, Cal six, Kama Township, six, and Kama Township, 12. So, it appears that both are over the 600 mark. Does anybody want to explain why we would want to consolidate this? I'll listen to any staff. Is that it? Jessica? Okay.
For this one in particular, the reason that we were doing it was to save costs, because both of them are, both of the polling locations are almost in the same location anyway. So, you would just remove the extra board to save costs, and there wouldn't be any further confusion. It's a simple information.
Okay, but, and just making sure, we, there, is there any disagreement that these are over 600?
No.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'll just give my comment on this. I remember, we can wait for discussion, I guess. I, you know, I, we've been, we've kind of been through some battles on this in the, in the past, and to me, I think, what I've learned at least, is, you know, there's a statute in place. At the end of the day, Secretary of State has, has the say, I think, is what I've, I learned early from, wasn't her current Secretary of State, it was Holly, it was.
It was under Holly Sullivan.
It was under Holly, yeah, Sullivan, and her staff. And so, like, when I was going through this, and again, this is just me on one vote on this board, but it seems to me that when it doesn't jive with the statute, we let the statute control. And I think I've just referred to even Chairman Neymeyer's remarks at the beginning of the meeting, you know, regarding the statute. So, that's where I'm at, just.
Mr. Chair.
And I'll try to remain consistent. That's my goal today.
Mr. Chair.
Clerk Brown.
So, my position is very simple. The question has always been about the 600. And when you look at the amount of precincts I have in Gary, one at 595, one at 591, some even closer, you want to cut those or combine them, however you want to say. And then, you still have a precinct that has over 600, and you're still trying to combine that. So, you have to make up your mind, you know, is it your left arm, your right arm, your nose? What are you gonna do? You can't say one thing about 600, and then we have another precinct that's over 600. Say, oh, well, it's over 600, but we're trying to save money. So, I, I think it sends a mixed message, as simple as that. You want us to agree, and if we don't agree, the Secretary of State gonna do what he's gonna do, and then it looks like we're not trying to work with you. But then, when we're trying to work with you, you're still saying, okay, you're working with us, but we want more. So, that's my.
Thank you, Clerk Brown. Any other, and I, and by the way, we don't have a motion in front of us. I'd probably have waited for the motion before I decided to get up on my soapbox, but I'll, of course, I'll allow any other comments by, and I guess my comment was more overarching, even though we're talking about Cal six and Cal 12 right now. But if there's any other comments by the board, of course, I'll entertain those now. If not, we can wait for discussion on a motion. Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion on Cal six and Cal 12, which is tan number one on page two of our legal sheet? Okay, hearing no motion, we'll, we'll move on to the next one, which is tan number two, Crown Point two. What does P, what does PT mean? Part? Question mark? Part question mark?
If you look at the map, page will be on here.
Yeah, let's.
But if you look at the map, I can show you.
So, this is.
So, if you look at, right here, you'll see this one, and then right there is the next one.
Okay, let me just make sure that, do we have this on, is there, whoever did the bait stamping of our board packet did a great job, because I, that, I don't know who did that, thank you. But do we have a page number that we can reference? And of course, the, the version I have on my iPad doesn't have pages. So, that's gone. No.
We're going to be starting with that one on page five of 54, that's number.
Yeah.
Number five? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So, for board members, if you want to look at your iPad, it's number five, and we're looking at, unfortunately, mine doesn't have any pages on my iPad version.
That's right.
Did I miss it?
It's right here. You're on page six.
How'd you find it?
It's right there.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. My hand's back. All right, and then you said it was on page five, Jessica?
I think I loved you.
Yep, you got me, yep. And it says CP one map on the top left? Okay. And so, just again, for notation purposes, housekeeping here, CP O two part equals 922, meaning there are 922 active voters in there?
So, there's two different sheets. I filled them out separately the first time. So, the one that is two-page, it's number five on the packet, will show you that there are 17, 1776 voters in, that are the active voters when you combine the precinct two with, or the part precinct two with the part precinct 30, there would be a total of 1776 in there with inactive voter count of 128. We can combine those together.
So, we'd be leaving CP two triangle kind of by itself in that map?
The second part, or the second part of this one is going to put the other part with CP 24 or 30. Basically, do you see the little triangle?
Yep.
If you look up to CP two, where it's connected to CP 30 on page nine, page nine.
Yeah.
And then, you'll see the little circles, where we roll, you know, the page and all stuff. Those two portions would be combined into one precinct. And then, the next.
That's okay, I know that's, and is it? Yeah? Yeah, I think we're, I think we're getting it. I think, I think we're getting it, by the way, just so you know, yeah.
The section right here is CP 30, and it's gonna be connecting to 24, just to clean up the map a bit, because there is that split here. And then, when we go to the next one, it's gonna be 24 added to two right here to make this box and that as boxy as possible, too.
So, in making them boxy, do, what do we do with the councils, county council? Because I know that, I think at some point, I looked at this one, and there was, I'm sorry, city council, does it, that, city council?
I would have to look at the sheet.
Go ahead, if you need to, yeah.
Will you guys go with this?
We, I think I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
That's pretty, the city council split, precinct two is in the second city council district, precinct 24 is in the first, and then precinct 30 is in the fourth.
Yeah, I don't have the benefit of having the Crown Point City Council map, but I'm assuming, Michelle, you have looked at this. This is your city.
See there? Precincts, terminal rushers, city council district.
There we have it.
This tall.
Yeah, so we use, so we can see her.
Yeah, I mean, I think what she's talking about.
Sorry.
Right, so you're, you're down here. Well, wherever.
Split. I'll just say directly.
You don't have one that's split.
So, CP two is 619, two, and six, two. We're talking municipal districts. That's where, I'm sorry. Yes, and the municipal district is where it is split. So, between two, 24, and 30.
There's three different districts?
There's three different districts. You have two, one, and four.
So, when they vote in the city races, we have to have like a's or something?
Yes, you would, which we then require an encoder in the precinct for them to activate it, so that it goes into the right spots. Keep in mind, we've always had a little bit of difficulty even when we do the reconciliation report on public numbers, get off on there with the a's. So, it's, it's very concerning, part of confusion for voters. It is an increase in the ballot, because now we have to create an additional ballot for that.
Can I ask, be any Crown, Chairman? Who's the Crown? Oh, I know you are, but I'm saying, does the Republican, Republican Chairman happen at the ear? No. Okay. All right, so, again, at, at risk of violating, or not violating, of doing exactly what I just did in the last one, I guess, just speaking again globally on these, I always get concerned about messing with precincts when they impact races. Because creating a's, I get it with school board, we've done that in the past, Lake Station, et cetera, et cetera. But creating a's for city council, county council, county commissioner, I just think you're at, in a way, I just think we're, you know, we always try our hardest here to, on election day, to make sure that everybody voted in the right precinct, that they voted correctly, that we don't have issues. And to me, it just seems that it opens up that possibility, a greater possibility of that happening. Not that it would, but a greater possibility of it potentially happening. And that, that's what would concern me on something like this. But is there any other comments by the board members before I ask for a motion on this? And I would, and I'm happy to open the floor to that. Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion then, and this is regarding tan number two and tan number three? Is there a motion regarding either of those precincts? It'd be Crown Point two and Crown Point 30, Crown Point two, Crown Point 24. Okay, hearing no motion, we'll move on to line three, which is Crown Point 13, Crown Point 14. Looks again that both of these are over 600. Is there any dispute about that? Is there any other reason? Is there any other reason outside of that? Cost, I assume it's cost potential savings, but.
So, last month, I had this one, and then there was one, I did it last month. But I do want to say for the record that section 10A.
Mm-hmm.
The statute.
Which, which one? Which statute is it?
The IC three dash 5.2, that 10.
Three, five.
Um, or three dash six, yeah, 5.2, that's enough.
Three, six, 5.2, 10. Okay, let me just get there.
Six, five, seven, eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jessica.
And then, well, 10A three, I'm sorry, I read that. It does say that potential savings in the administration of elections resulting in the combinations of precincts under the section.
Yeah, it's determined by the Secretary of State. Yeah, and I, I agree with your reading of it. I just think that it's, the Secretary of State can consider that, right? Yeah, and I see what you're saying. You're saying, why don't we look at it that way first, and then Secretary of State's gonna do what he's gonna do? Yeah.
This was, it will not vote for Secretary of State. It's not really, you may not be interested in force.
Okay, and I thought Jessica was saying that notwithstanding the 600, this was a factor that could be considered. And I, I'm not sitting here being able to interpret the statute, because I'm just sitting around the fly, but I think, Judge, at this point, was, that's the point you're trying to, okay.
Thank you.
And I think, Michelle, your point you're saying is, which, you're saying that six, section 10A one, says the Secretary, Secretary of State has to determine which precincts within the county had fewer than 600.
Right, so, he will have the right to determine the 600, these are both over 600, but they will.
I get it.
Something that he should move on to solve.
Okay, I guess, just different interpretation of the statute, but I understand both your points. Thank you. Okay. Number four on the tan sheet, which is Crown Point 13, Crown Point 14, is there a motion on that? Okay, hearing none. Move on to number five? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yep, 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 yep.
Which one are you on?
Uh, number four. Crown Point 13, Crown Point 14, both over 600. Okay, hearing no, no motion. Move on to number five, which is Crown Point 11 with 1,077 voters, Crown Point 21, 685, and then we have Crown Point 21A is the third one. So, anybody want to?
This is Crown Point 26, which is a small precinct, as I said, that also is all there, actually, one of those. So, two, it's not part of the precinct that has a certain ownership. It would be in a voting, shows is entered, that's, either way, it's a standard mark.
That's fine.
So, that's.
Okay, any other comments on, on number five, on the tan, tan number five on page two? All right, is there a motion on this? Looks like, I'm sorry, yeah?
I do, and I'm trying to figure out the wording and.
Yeah, yeah.
All this is going through a bit confusing.
Take your time.
Um, so, it would be a motion to move this forward to the Secretary of State's office.
By consolidating, or like, is there a recommendation, or just?
The recommendation would be to proceed with a consolidation.
Okay. So, there's a motion by Ms. Angerman to proceed with consolidation of Crown Point 11, Crown Point 21, and Crown Point 21A, which is number five on the tan sheet. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there a second?[1666.28]
Second.
Thank you, Ms., second by Ms. Brandenburg, motion by Ms. Angerman. Discussion. I have a question for Jessica. Any outside of of cost considerations, any other reason to consolidate these?
Some of them going forward, you'll see that the precinct, the voting location was moved.
Okay.
So just for the future reference on some of these. If we had two distinct polling locations that were in a church or some kind of private building, I opted to try to combine those so that we have one rental, we have one board. So that was some of the considerations going forward. Another set was if we had two polling locations and one of them was a public building and one of them was a private building, we opted to go with the government building to save on rental costs. With this one in particular, it moved it away, or it moved to White Hawk because there would be minimal voter confusion. Most people knew or know where White Hawk is in Crown Point.
That's a private entity though, right?
But they were voted into private entities.
Gotcha.
Same on the board and a state rental location.
So I guess my question back to Jessica would be, the, when you say combine it to one board, you're saying go from two inspectors, two clerks, two judges down to one each, right?
Yes.
That would have to service a lot more voters though, right? One board. And we're talking about nineteen, almost two thousand active voters, notwithstanding anybody that might be inactive or new registrants that would come to vote at that place on a busy election day.
Well, we would, yes, but we would have that information, the N thirty, for you to like register to vote.
Yeah, sure.
That being said, with, the limits are again six hundred to two thousand.
Yeah.
Money and not bust the two thousand number.
Uh, yes, Ms. Candelara Rubin.
Um, I just wanted to ask Jessica, I know that you mentioned some cost involved with private entities and government buildings. And with an increase in voters, will that add to the space requirements for the private area?
There are a few of them in here to where, again, those two private polling locations, if one of them had a large parking lot in a larger building, I opted for that one as opposed to the smaller location. So the way that we have our machines and everything set up, how we do have extras. And there's nothing to say, we already have the equipment. So if we're combining two polling locations together, you can keep all of the equipment and still have the same number of voting machines, you'd still be able to do everything.
But you don't have one line.
But.
Yeah, so like, I guess another like consideration in my mind from a global perspective is just, you know, one of the things we like to try to do is to make voting convenient. And I think the board's done a great job acting in a bipartisan manner to increase early voting sites. And to me, that is a convenience for the voter, both in time and location. I think with this, the, the reason I would vote, the reason I would vote against this is that one of the things I've heard over the years is just like, oh, the line was too long, I didn't want to wait. And then people leave. And that's, to me, that's a fail by us as a board and by us as a county to make it more difficult for someone to vote, or in their minds, more difficult. I don't, I think our poll workers do a great job moving people through. But if you see a line and, oh my gosh, I've got to get my kid from, from, you know, after school care, or I've got to relieve my babysitter, or I've got to get to work. And that then, that then stops you from voting because you see a long line. And it was because we decided to consolidate into one board. To me, that's, that on my part, if I voted for that, I would, I'd feel that that was a fail by me. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I have to agree with you because one of the things that we've done as a board over the years is try to make it convenient for the voter as well as to have adequate staff, so there's not an overload on that staff and having the ability, because if you just have one line, it could be someone that has an ADA issue, you know, and some other things going on. And then again, I've known people to get out of line because they didn't want to wait. And that's what made early voting so good, that's what made voting at home convenient. But when you start looking at this number and only having staff of one, that's very concerning for me.
Yeah, staff of one board. And I think also, you know, we're all taxpayers here. I, one of the things I know and like the fact is that our, my tax dollars that I pay to the county go towards convenient elections. I mean, I say that to, I just said it to one of my kids last week, is that, you know, one of the things we pay for in taxes is for elections. And so I, I personally like the idea of making my tax dollars work for the voters of Lake County to make it easier for them to vote and more convenient to vote. So that's where I'm at on this issue. Any other, any other discussion?
Also, Mr. Chair, thank you. I think it's important as board members, as elected officials, and anyone in this in this room that is concerned about the integrity of vote, to actually go out and see people in line like I have and see how people actually struggle waiting to vote. So the last thing I want to do is make it worse than what I've already seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk Brown. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing, hearing none. This, the motion is to consolidate. So a motion, a vote in favor would be to consolidate, a motion against would be to keep these in place. So hearing no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of consolidation, in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, all those opposed, I'm sorry, all those in.
In favor, yes.
Yes, okay, all those opposed. Nay.
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 Okay, motion fails for two to three. Okay, moving on to number six. This is dire four. This is tan number six on page two. The, oop, I don't know if that was a I or a na, but. This is tan six, dire four and dire five. Appears both, these are over six hundred. Jessica, any other reason outside of cost consolidation?
To a government location. Yeah, so that was the reason. Well, addition to the other ones, normal.
Correct. Okay, any just, any, any other discussion by any board members on this before I ask for a motion? Or questions for the staff, rather. Hearing none, is there a motion on, on number, tan number six?
I will move to forward six for consolidation consideration to the Secretary of State.
Okay, no motion to consolidate, dire four and five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Ms. Angerman, motion to Ms. Brandenburg. Any discussion? Just for the record, I'd note that these are both over six hundred and therefore are within the statute that would keep it from being consolidated. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, again, again, as I said in my opening statement regarding this, you're asking us to consolidate those under six hundred. I'm sure we'll have to accommodate that. But those that are over six hundred, why are you doing this when it makes, it makes no sense to?
Okay, thank you, Kirk Brown. Any other discussion?
Jessica?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Angerman.
I'm sorry. Do you have any information about cost savings on these?
Yes.
How much would we be saving? I mean, is it a small amount? Is it a large amount? What are we saving by, by streamlining this?
Generally speaking, it's about twenty-one forty a year per polling location as well, what we say, for precinct, I'm sorry.
So two elections, so a thousand bucks an election. A pro, I mean, give or take.
So it's about twenty-one forty.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Do you, do you have, like, what that would be over a cycle or longer?
Over one primary and one general, so a yearly cycle, it would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars per one year stay.
Per one year cycle, a hundred thousand dollars?
Just.
This whole, if this is.
Okay, so that's what I was gonna ask next, I think. So the, the whole proposal, if all the consolidations that you suggest or that Michelle suggests, no, this is just.
Off of proposal number two.
Got it.
I did do a very basic because I didn't know exactly which one we were to go through. But per one year, per general and primary, if you add technically all of them together, it would be a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty.
Okay. But that everyone we don't consolidate costs about a thousand bucks an election, give or take?
About, well, eight, twenty-one forty.
That's for both general and primary. So per election, meaning one primary would be, what's my math here, a thousand seventy, I guess? Thousand seventy, half of twenty-one forty.
To work against, to go back to, against just this, that was one or two, but it'd be about seven hundred and seventy dollars over a vendor period.
Right, and of course, that takes into account if we do all of them. And so far, we've done a lot of them. I mean, we've done, the ones we've agreed on obviously would, would include part of that savings towards the seven hundred. We just don't know where that number is at this point because we haven't added them up. Okay, Mr. Tolbert.
Statute goes, right, six, five, one, two, ten, accessible valuation.
Yep.
And it appears also that we've discussed unreasonable obstacles to the ability to vote.
It's another one, yes.
Just wanted to bring that to the force extension. It looks like there are other factors outside of cost savings.
By the Secretary of State.
Yes. Although the six hundred threshold hasn't been met, but your bypass, that consolidation, there are other factors that are serious.
To consolidate or to not consolidate, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Tolbert. Any other discussion on the motion?
Consideration also is high, it's something that is usually small, it's a year, so bad, you forget, it's just to grow.
Yes.
Just add it back in, it's going, it's very, because money is gone, it's hard to get back.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments or discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mister, Ms. Brandenburg.
I wonder if we should kind of look more holistically at a lot of these in disagreement. My overall sentiment is that this is an important factor in consideration, the savings that can occur here when you're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars over, was it ten years of time potentially? This is a lot of cost benefit. And, you know, I, I know a lot of care has been taken in these recommendations to avoid obstacles to the voters, to ensure that, you know, for instance, in, in one of the, I think it was one or two, those voters are already voting in the same location. We've had issues as a board in training staff, ensuring sufficient staff, making sure that we can keep track of them, making sure they go to the right places. That's something we're dealing with every election day. Somebody went to the wrong place or they didn't show up. Consolidation favors an improvement in many of those factors that become significant obstacles, both to the board, to staffing, to voters. You know, when, when a poll can't open at six AM because there's no staff, that's a significant obstacle to those voters who have to leave and maybe can't come back that day. So I think for a lot of those reasons, my overall feeling as to all of these is that the Secretary of State should have the ability to consider them. I'd like the Secretary of State to be able to do that. And, you know, rather than going through each one of these one by one where the, the factors and the analysis are kind of the same, perhaps we could just make a more holistic motion to embrace all of that.
Of course, the motion can be made on however you want, Ms. Brandenburg. And I'm happy to, obviously, the board will consider any motion made by any board member. If you want to look at this more, you know, versus me just having to go through, you know, another five pages of this, I'm happy to take a look at that. And I appreciate the comments. I guess right now, we currently still have a motion unless it's being withdrawn.
Sure, and maybe we need to get through that motion on this one, and then perhaps I'll make that motion for the next segment.
Sure, all right. So.
So.
Any other, any other, any other comments regarding, or any other discussion regarding the motion of dire four and five?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Kirk Brown.
Well, I can really appreciate the cost cutting and everything. I think at some point, we have to be concerned about the way we spend and are we getting the best for our dollar? Sometimes you can cut so much until you're not effective at what needs to be done, the safety factors and everything. In, in the automobile industry, they look at, you know, you know, what, what part goes on the vehicle and what's the cost versus the, the ability for it to perform in a safe way. And I'm just concerned, it looks like we're leaning toward a vote center county. Is that what this is all about? Because, you know, I, I know some other counties throughout the state that have that. And I know some have tried and been successful, some, you know, have. You know, I keep telling people, one shoe does not fit all in the state of Indiana. We are a county, we're the second largest county in the entire state, and we have a constantly growing population of people coming from all over the country into Lake County. And the last thing I want is inconvenience for them. While I must tell you, I'm always concerned about spending because I try to be extremely conservative in my spending as an office holder. However, when it comes to what the public needs as far as customer service, because that's what we've really provided, a customer service for them to have the ability to get in line in a timely manner and cast their vote. I will not cut that service to them because it needs to be cost cutting. That I will, I will not support that.
Thank you, Kirk Brown. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. I am all for providing the best possible service. I am not reckless in my spending. You can look at me as an office holder. But I just cannot understand how we could just say, well, this is cost cutting, that's cost cutting, and at the same time not think about that person in line.
Thank you, Kirk Brown. Any other discussion? Yeah, the only other comment I guess I'll, I'll have, since it sounds like we might be going in a different direction after this motion, would be, you know, I, I'm all for cost cutting when it's done smartly in, in, in a, in a manner that addresses the issue. I think we get caught up both nationally in our state legislature, and now it seems even locally, where it's just all about what's the bottom line? How are we cutting this? And does it impact, how does it impact people? Or how does it impact programs? Or how does it impact what our job as government is? And if you don't really look at it that way and you just say, oh, well, here's a number, I think you risk, you know, making, you can say at the end of the day, like, oh, look at the money we saved. But then it doesn't necessarily accomplish the goal, or it makes things more difficult for folks. That's all I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. The motion on the table is number six, tan number six on page two, dire four and five. The motion is to consolidate. So motion, vote in favor would be to consolidate, a motion, mo, I'm sorry, a vote in favor would be to consolidate, a vote against would be to not consolidate. So all those in favor of consolidating dire four and five signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
And they have it two to, three to two, motion fails. All right. Let me ask this. I see, for example, we've got many precincts on here that are under six hundred. I'm just looking, for example, at blue twenty, which carries over to page three, tan eight, blue twenty-one.
Yep.
Blue twenty-three. Uh, let's see here, uh, blue twenty-four. And that takes us through page three.
It's not like the quarterback.
Yeah, Omaha. That takes us through page three, and I could keep going if the board wants me to, but that's just a start. Is there, I mean, like, is there, would there be, would, I'd entertain a motion to consolidate those that I listed because they're all under six hundred. Is that something the board would want to consider? If you don't, I'm fine with not doing that.
I'm motioning for that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Number twenty-three and twenty-four.
Blue.
What are those consolidating?
Great question. Michelle, do we know where those are consolidating?
The recommendation was from Mr. Brown to lead that, so I'm not sure.
They need to consolidate somewhere.
Yeah, I, I recommend, but however, if the number is under six hundred, then, okay. I won't, I won't, you know. Right. Okay, yes.
I'm sorry, what is that?
It's that twenty-three.
Blue twenty-three?
Which is the deal, because it's nine away.
Yes.
The recommendation would be that to go with it, and for thirteen, which was consolidated in two one.
Okay.
With number thirteen, tan thirteen, or whatever, tan thirteen, I, oh, I see.
Yep.
I see, okay.
Tan thirteen.
So blue twenty-three goes with tan thirteen.
Right.
Okay, and then, uh, blue twenty-one goes with tan eleven. No, no, that's not. Okay, got it.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
And then what about, um, blue twenty?
Blue thirty.
Blue twenty with, uh, does that go with tan eight? Blue twenty's in the bottom of page two.
It's like it has, you see.
I don't see very much.
Oh, okay.
Is it rose four together?
Yes.
All right, it seems like it created more problems than I was trying to solve, but.
Have to be the twenty-three and not blue twenty-three.
It doesn't.
And it's just.
We already done those.
And the same, you have to, or not, that's one, and forty, tan fourteen, etc. You're ready for those two.
I, I think it's entirely confusing. I mean, we've got a few lists. I don't know what's being split. Blues and tans go together and it's very confusing.
Okay, then, yeah, and I, I wasn't trying to make anybody confused. I apologize if I did.
No, I don't.
I, I'm happy to go back to the old way, which is doing them one at a time. But I don't know if Ms. Brandenburg also discussed making them more holistic. I think that was the word you used.
I mean, I think my, my goal was anticipating that we, we might have some disagreement. There's two different proposals here. One proposal appears to be prioritizing both cost savings with an outlook on ensuring there isn't inconvenience to the voters and that we're not creating something that's far too large or unruly, minimizing staff, reducing private buildings so that we're reliant on more public spaces that are much easier for us to use for voting centers. And so, I mean, to the extent we have two different, yeah, locations, to, to the extent we have two different proposals, I think that they should be forwarded for consideration to the Secretary of State so the Secretary of State can do their job under the statute of looking at the factors they're supposed to look at, that he's supposed to look at, and make his analysis.
So. In other words, instead of taking each of them, because to me, just me looking at them, I think there are pluses and minuses to both. Like, I went through, which, which proposals, the tan one, is that one or two? Okay. Okay. Even that's confusing. To, um, let me look up, yeah.
That's number two and that's number one.
Okay, so I think both proposal number one and proposal number two, as I reviewed them, trying to be objective when I reviewed them, both have pluses and minuses. Like, I would, I'm in favor of some of one, I'm in favor of some of two, I'm against some of one, I'm against some of two. So, like, I, I don't know how, how to resolve that, given what you just said, Carly, or Ms. Brandon Berg, because I, I, I see what you're saying is like, well, let's just forward them to the Secretary of State and let him take a look at each proposal. And I guess my message to the Secretary of State, if I had the opportunity to discuss it with him, would be, hey, there, you gotta look at both of them because from my perspective, some of this needs to go through, some of this needs to go through. So that's what I would fear about just saying, or us voting on, I don't know if I could vote for either of them, really, to go down.
So, I want to say, oh.
600. Okay, Ms. Brandon Berg, then, Ms. Candela Rieden.
I, I guess, I thought our approach at this meeting was we're going to figure out the areas of agreement. That's easy. You know, we've, we've, perhaps done that, maybe we haven't done that in full. But to establish those areas of agreement, because those would get forwarded as per agreement of the board, which is great. Then we have areas of disagreement where there's alternate proposals. I don't, I, I don't know that we're going to have consensus on that. And so, if both proposals are forwarded to the Secretary of State, that seems reasonable and appropriate to me.
If, so, maybe one area of agreement, but I don't know if there is, because I noticed there's something where there's like council splits within the district. And I know I see Chairman Rayco's here from Hammond, because he called me about a precinct split in the second district that also creates an issue with county council districts. Outside of that, I think what I'm hearing from the board, and, and, I'm sorry, Marty, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just said, you know, I think that, you know, submitting two proposals would be a mistake. I don't think that the Secretary of State is going to take the care and consideration that people here on the ground and, and closer to the voters will take. I just don't have the confidence. I've been downstate, I know what happens there, and I'm, I'm not confident that they would consider both proposals at all.
But thank you. What I was going to say is that, if I'm hearing the board correctly, I'm just trying to read the tea leaves here. It seems like if there is a consolidation that does not impact a split in either a county council, county commissioner, or other elected office within that consolidation, that anything under 600, we're saying, go ahead and consolidate. So if that's the case, would it be, would it behoove us to do, entertain a motion to agree that anything under 600 is available for consolidation? That doesn't involve a split. Jessica?
Say that there is a potential for the two proposals to disagree on how to handle something under 600.
In other words, like, one proposal might say consolidated with this precinct, the other proposal might say consolidated with this precinct.
And that's just to keep going straight through. You're the other, the city and the visual, why don't you turn over? I'll listen to you and say, hey, anything that's over the 600, we're not even addressing those because we don't have to at this point in time. It's not even a qualification, don't get me mixed up. It's excited that the Secretary of State is reviewing. I don't, we just, they, that whole thing down. They do not know our communities better than we do. It's like that in advance, and being this terrible idea. I mean, but we should just keep going right through here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to try to avoid, you know, being here till 3 o'clock as well. Yeah, I mean, I think, from what I can tell, again, I'm reading the tea leaves here, that if precincts are over 600, it seems like this side of the aisle is in favor of keeping them as is. This side of the aisle is, is in favor of consolidating them as listed. And it seems like we do have agreement on anything under 600. Outside of if it creates a split, that those would be consolidated. And I would turn this over to our attorney, oop, we only have one right now. I guess, I, I, I don't, you know, like, I think what I, what I'm hearing from the board also is we want to give the Secretary of State a message that doesn't say, oh, just look at these two proposals, because there's a lot of, the devil's in the details on a lot of things here.
Right.
And I do want, I do think we want to be heard as a community, as a county, on these issues, and not just say, take one or the other. Because I think that lends itself to, you know, either, I think that lends itself to the Secretary of State saying, oh, it's an easy decision, I just need to choose one or the other. Not saying he's going to do that, but I'm just saying that that, I think it, you know, human nature, right, is just like, oh, okay, I got two proposals, I'll choose one, why do I need to get in the details? Here's, here's what I need to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Clark Brown?
So we are the boots on the ground for this board, and we are connected to the election process. So we do have a responsibility to try and get it correct as best we can before it goes to Secretary of State. Based on what we started on, the issue was anything under 500. Then the cost savings and all those other things came in. Now the devil's in the detail. So, from my perspective, anything that's under 600, I can understand because that's where we at. And then there's a few details about how you deal with that under 600. But anything over it, on them?
I would suggest that you just continue to, uh, another might be with the seeds. Just continue to go down the track before you prove each and once. With the nuances that might get, like, that's probably better for the record. I, I do agree with what has been said in terms of just submitting two proposals down. Stay with probably, I don't necessarily think would be a, uh, I don't necessarily think that would be consistent with the way the statute calculates out, which would be dividing proposals on things that technically the Secretary of State wouldn't necessarily even, shouldn't even be looking at because they're 600 threshold, so.
Right.
I think you just need, probably just go continue moving, take a little time, just continue to go down and, uh, discuss it as it comes up. And if you get, if you get that in session, if you have it, and you can't, you can't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't think there's a motion currently. We left off at Tan seven. As Chair, of course, I'm open to any motion, but at this point, I'll go with what our attorney suggested, which is Tan seven, Dyer eight, 839 voters, Dyer 14, 798. Consolidating would create a precinct of nearly 1600, I'm sorry, over 1600 voters. Jessica, I'll ask you again, just anything other than cause consideration on this one? I'm sorry, you were on Tan seven?
Um, so, yeah, I don't just, there are two polling locations within one mile of another. So that was in third, top sector. So, yeah, it's moved it to the government building.
And with, with the government?
The second location.
Got it.
To the government building.
The other one was already a government building? The other one was already a government building?
Was it? I, I didn't, you didn't make very well of them, but either way, I think it's a government building right now.
Okay.
I'm just thinking of what government buildings in Dyer, maybe Town Hall or something.
Prossman.
Prossman, okay, oh, schools, sure.
So there's, so currently, there's a church within a mile of Prossman, and we're using two separate locations.
I'm not going to say it was a church. It could have been another government building. It, it, I can get down into the, well, actually, maybe I can't pitch you the details, hold on. What is this, Dyer four and five? One of them was at Prossman.
Oh, no, four and, eight and 14, sorry, eight and 14. Eight and 14, we already did four and five.
That's where, yes, okay.
That's okay.
Um, eight is, this is the Faith and Form Church. So this was one of the, it was at Rise Church and Faith and Form Church, so it's to combine into one private building with the larger building being the favorite one. It's basically, this is, or if they're looking.
Yeah, it's kind of tucked away down on 81st there, towards Illinois, and then, you know, that serves those back subdivisions there. Where, where's the other one, Rise?
Rise Church, yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, here we are on number seven, Dyer eight, Dyer 14, Tan seven on the bottom of page two. Is there a motion, Dick?
All right. To consolidate, to reduce to one location, given the considerations.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Brandon Berg, second by Ms. Angerman, any discussion? My vote on this is going to be because of the 600 threshold. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, so everybody saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails two to three. Next is Blue 20, which is East Chicago two, it's 588, and East Chicago three at 951.
The area that, that's what was just talking, like, we both come up with reducing, but in different ways.
So we're looking at, just real quick for the record, Blue 20 and Tan eight, all right?
So, both of them reduced by every cent. Um, Blue Tan is East Chicago two going with three, creates no splits. And eight and the tan combines two and 24, which creates a city council split and a school board split, which is the, as we've been recent. It's the difference in how we got to the end result. And then 24 on, on our plan, because 24 is still under the 600, does come up under number 21. So you will hit to it, we are still cutting, but it's coming up in a different cut.
I'm just trying to find it on our iPad.
So, it is on the bottom there, page, between page two and three, between East Chicago two and three.
Yeah, I see that.
And then hers is number two and 24. Now you'll notice on 24, it's 591 voters. If you scroll down to number 21, you'll see it, 24 is being consolidated just in another fashion. So it will still be removed, just putting it out in a different fashion that is a pretty split. Again, it's a new place.
Okay, and do we, does anybody know where to reference this on the iPad? Curiosity.
Maybe two areas, unfortunately, maybe.
Okay, no, that's okay. Does anybody have any questions for either Michelle or Jessica on this?
So how do we, how do we see which one's which? Which split is which one? There's two different options, which, which one's which option?
Do you want map wise, or just in general?
In general.
So we've got, uh, Blue, Blue 20, which has to be taken in conjunction, I believe, with Blue 21, is that right, or no?
So it's either, what?
Yeah, it's Blue, Blue 20 is 58, EC two and EC three. Michelle, are you suggesting, on your?
Two and three, because that does not create a split. And then pick one, doing 23 and 24, which again, does not have a split.
And Jessica's suggesting two and 24, which does create a split.
They're on, she's suggesting 22 and 23. There is no split there, but in the end result, you're still eliminating two or three. So with the blue, you're not creating split, on the other one, you're splitting.
Okay, so Jessica, do you want to address the issue of your suggestion on Tan eight, that two and 24, whether that creates a split or not?
Unfortunately, confused on which tans and blues are lining up. I like, I have mine in a straight order.
Okay, if you want to reference them, yeah, we can reference yours as well.
So, so we're looking at combining EC two with EC three.
Right.
No, oh, yes, yes, go ahead, go ahead, Leanne, yep, you're right.
Or EC two with EC 24.
Right, correct.
And the first one that Michelle recommended, she's got EC 24 identified later for a different consolidation, split, consolidation. So two and three would lead to 23, 24. Or you have EC two and EC 24, but it creates a city council and.
School board.
School board split. Now, I will, I do notice on, on the forms, you're checking that box, you're, you're telling it whether it has a school corporation, district boundary, a city or town boundary, town council boundary, you're letting them know. They see all of that when they get to IEC eight. It's not prohibited, right, to cross the city council? And it is indicated on the IEC eight if that's the, if that occurs, or if that's suggested to occur, everything being proposed. Okay.
So do we, let me ask you this then, Jessica, given that, and Leanne, I don't know if I have the, the right IEC eight, or do you have that one on fight fans?
You know what, I was looking at general.
Just in general, that's okay, I get it, it's this section, yeah.
Yeah, I got you. Section five.
Is it about 37?
Thank you, thank you, all right, you found it. Mine only goes through page, oh, yeah, here we go.
It's right at the top.
Yeah.
Here, it's this.
Oh, I see it.
Okay.
Okay, so the question for Jessica, I guess, would be, is there a reason that you chose this split that does create, I'm sorry, this consolidation that creates a split in the city council district boundary versus the suggestion of Michelle that does not create the city council and school board split?
I would say on face value, the first, proposal number one would leave 1,500 approximately voters. On proposal number two would leave 1,161. So, um, that would be something I would consider between the two, is there would be less voters in the precincts in terms of what we were talking about earlier with long, long lines and such. The proposal two would have less.
But you, you agree that you'd be creating an A in, let's say, 2027, which is the next municipal election?
And maybe in eight, because it would be two splits, because it's also score split.
And school board would be next year, right?
Based on, I would increase the name, potentially it could be, be also.
Yeah, that's more like a you, Leanne and Jessica don't understand all that, but, okay.
So, when the CEO was here, as well as Councilwoman, you had, um, most, because all this was here.
Yep.
That were talking, integrating those two, the splitting of districts.
Yeah, they were, that's right.
You know, considering that you're going to create splits within districts.
Yeah, I think creating splits within council districts does concern me, but, and I, and I appreciate the fact they came last meeting, and I want to acknowledge that they did come, the, both the Chicago council folks that would be impacted by this, and they were, they were against it. Okay, so, any other discussion or questions of staff?
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Candela Rieden?
I have concerns about causing a split. I mean, I think that it has the potential to disenfranchise voters, and I think that if we can, can be mindful and consolidate without creating those splits, I think it would be better for the voters.
And in this case, you're probably going to be saying that's ending. And whether you go with two and three, that is losing one, and then 23 and 24 is losing one, save the number of two in 24, it's losing one, and her 22 and 23, so in the end, your savings comes out to be the same. It's just that there's no split in the district. So, if you're looking at finances wise, it's going to be zero change, what your end result is going to be, minus the split.
Yeah, it seems like there, this really isn't a cost issue on this one. It's all about whether we agree that we think it's a good idea to split into, uh, two different, into an A for city council reasons. And I don't know, how do they, how would they do that when there's a caucus? Does the precinct committee man get to vote on both? Like, with the?
It's all based on where you live, and some you can. Consider one precinct, it's a split in the ballot, and so.
No, I'm saying if there's a caucus, like, that's where there's a vacancy.
That, that would go to state party rules. And I believe they would invite both.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the, the two sets of rules are different. I mean, I don't pretend to know.
No, I'm saying what if there's not both? What if there's not, what, like, I'm saying not like until, because next year, we elect precinct committee people, right?
Right.
So, let's say we do this consolidation with a split, and a new precinct committee person is elected. And does that precinct committee person then get to vote in a caucus in either district, if there's a vacancy?
I think that's dealt with within your party rules.
Okay.
I, I mean.
What are your, what are, alright, so what are your party rules on that?
Done this before, um, and I'm trying to think and go backwards, because it's been a hot minute. When we did this before, the state party rule said you have two precinct committees, and it depended on whether or not they were elected or appointed. If they were elected to stay.
Right, I'm saying, let's assume we're beyond that. We're at the next precinct election, which is next spring.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, so we've, let's say we've consolidated.
How have you done it with, it depends, if it's a split, then it's still one precinct. How have we done it so far? We already have splits. How did you handle the splits in Lake Station?
And I'm not suggesting a split, we're talking about consolidation here, but that there's going to be, there's going to be two, if, if we, if we go with tan eight, and two and twenty-four get consolidated, right? We, we all agree that that creates a, um, situation where there's going to be one precinct committee person at, at some point in the future, because of next spring, we're going to vote for one precinct committee person in that, so it'll be one. However, that precinct committee person is going to be, um, a committee person in a district where two city council members are represented, correct?
Right.
Okay, so let's say that for whatever reason over the next four years, both those city council seats become vacant.
I mean, we, we have, we have splits now.
Does that, it's not, right, so does that one precinct committee person get to vote in the vacancy for District A and vote for the vacancy in District B?
I think that would be between the two state party rules, whoever's vacancy it is.
Yeah, and I, maybe I'm not being clear, but I'm saying.
No, I get what you're saying, but I, we already have splits. And in some cases, like Lake Station, where you have, what, one, five, seven, and nine, something like that, they have been and always have been, like, considered two precincts.
And how many precinct committee men, committee people are there?
If it's considered its own precinct and just named an A, then each one would get one. If it is a true split precinct, then it would only be one. And I suppose if, you know, I mean, I, I'm hesitant, I don't know the Democrat rules. You know, I don't, I don't want to misstate myself here, I don't want to misrepresent, you know, Democrat rules, or even at times the Republican rules. If there is a split, it's handled within party rules, that's a party function, that function doesn't come before us as an election board at all.
But a caucus of, of vacancy is, is managed by statute.
Managed by statute, but it's managed by the party, caucuses are not managed by the board.
But the, but the caucus, like, how to fill a vacancy is managed by statute.
By the party.
The actual caucus is run by the party, but the vacancy is managed by the statute of provisions, right? I guess how a precinct committee person that's within two councilmanic districts would rely on party rules, I guess, but it seems kind of weird to give that precinct, one of the main, one of the main functions of a committee person outside of their election duties is to vote vacancies, I think we would all agree with that.
Yes, vote in caucus.
Yeah, vote in caucus, I'm sorry, caucus, sure, whether it be for chairman, or for city council vacancy, right? Um, and so now all of a sudden, you've got a precinct committee person that could potentially vote in two different, two district vacancies. And I, I.
But I, I think.
It may be party rule.
Yeah, the voting district too.
Say that again, Leanne?
It would be within the voting district as well.
Would be within their voting district, yes. Okay.
I mean, currently, we don't have people listed in the A precincts.
Correct, nor, do you think you would? You think you would elect a precinct committee person in the A precincts? You can't, I was going to say you can't.
Yeah.
So it's one precinct.
One committee person. And one committee person.
So you don't get a separate precinct committee for all your A's.
Correct, that's the way I understand it.
Was there a time when the state messed up and created a couple A's when we were saying, no, it was an A? There were a short amount of time where Lake Station.
That's our Lake Station.
You have some A's that were valid precincts. We have now cleaned those up. We are again creating like six A's as we did before, but it's still a solid A, and now it's on precinct.
Okay. Okay, so I, any other discussion? And I, I think we're, we, we've beaten this pretty good. Carol, entertain a motion as it relates to East Chicago two, three, two, or I'm sorry, two, three, twenty-four?
Well, I think you would need to do two and three first, right?
Sure.
And see if that's successful, and then do EC two and twenty-four and see if that's successful. Keep in mind, if you consolidate twenty-four now, it may affect the twenty-one, twenty-two version. Make sense?
Yes, it would affect, it would affect the blue twenty-one. I agree with that. Um, okay, so I'll entertain a motion as it relates to blue twenty, which is, which is a suggested consolidation of EC two and twen, and three.
Motion to approve.
Motion to consolidate two and, EC two and three, um, by Clerk Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Candela Rieden, uh, is there any, uh, discussion on that? Any hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries three to. Um, given that we just did that, is, I'll, I will see if there's a motion regarding tan eight, which is a consolidation of two and twenty-four, which may be moot at this point.
Makes a motion for consolidation of EC two and twenty-four, which would result in a lower number of voters in that precinct.
Okay, there's a motion to consolidate two and twenty-four, which is tan eight, um, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Angerman, motion by Ms. Brandenburg, any discussion? I would mention that, uh, the reason I'll vote against this is that it creates a city council split, which I believe is confusing, and also gives, uh, too much power to one precinct committee man instead of two, uh, one for each councilmanic district. I'll also mention for the record, the testimony of Councilwoman Monica and, uh, Councilman Robert at the last meeting. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of consolidating EC two and twenty-four, tan eight, signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
Motion fails two to three. Um, next is EC thirteen and EC thirteen A, which is tan nine. It looks like there is a under six hundred here in thirteen A.
This is a mistake, go ahead. There was no discussion we had earlier.
Okay.
One precinct, there is nothing to be consolidated.
Okay.
Split that is out there.
Let me.
Previous, and there is nothing to consolidate.
So let me just ask Jessica if that's a mistake, or if there is not a mistake?
The records I have, that's not current. According to what I have, it says EC thirteen, the original EC thirteen has seven hundred and fifty-eight active voters in it, and what would be now, or if this is approved formally, EC thirteen A has five hundred and fifty-six active voters. So it does have two, according, again, to the paperwork I have seen, has two separate amounts of voters.
She is looking at the precinct count, that yes, will tell you exactly how many voters are in the A sections. That would be, would be prepared in the ballot, would be presented. You actually look at the precinct key of the state, the precinct key has one precinct.
Would this also go for tan ten, which is seventeen and seventeen?
Seventeen, seventeen.
Okay, hold on. Okay, so that'd be tan nine, ten, and twelve. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, one of our board members who may have some insight into this, namely Ms. Angerman, um, any comment on what Michelle and Jessica are saying about the precinct key versus the count?
I guess I'm a little confused, how do we, how do we not have a split?
There, there is already an existing split that was created by the city council or whatever.
Right.
The split is already there. It is one precinct, it's known as East Public thirteen, and then there's a split, whether it is from the, if they, the city council, they're in order, it's a school board split that's already existing, but the precinct name is EC thirteen. This is just showing that there's already a split, so there's nothing to combine. You can't submit a precinct, you can't submit an IEC eight, the thirteen A, the thirteen A, in their mind, as precinct does not exist. That is strictly for our ballot purposes, that the thirteen A exists.
You, you're saying as, as differentiated from Lake Station?
For maybe six, eight years, yes, we used to have a pay that was its own precinct, because when we submitted it to the state, and we were used to the old way of doing it, they created the A. This is not an A as it stands right now.
Jessica.
It is for ballot purposes, but not for the precinct key.
So the way, uh, when I'm looking at the legislative directory, which is what we used to do all of those, it does have two distinct and separate locations, but if you look at them, the senate is, um, two, the house is two, the commissioner is three, the council is five, and the district is three. So I don't see where there would be a split ballot, because thirteen A and thirteen itself, all of them have the same.
School board too?
Yes.
School board too?
Yes.
School board as well.
School board as well.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So all of the, I mean, it's the same township, it's the same everything all the way across.
School board, it's different. So it's a school board split already.
According to the one I printed out on January, well, this is the revised from twenty, or January twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the last one in the system, I mean, even the polling location.
So maybe I should, could, maybe I could suggest this. It seems that if, if, if Jessica's correct, then the, the motion would be to combine these and to consolidate. If Michelle's correct, then the motion would be that we leave them as is. Right, I mean, I think we're, I think everyone's saying, it just seems to be a technical issue as to how the state's seeing it.
Are there two separate sets of staff in one location?
Or voters?
No.
If there's one set of staff.
Or, or there is no cost savings, it is one precinct. Your split is showing up on the ledger, yes, because it is a split in the school board, so we have to know that there's a split in the ballot. That is one, is a fact, that it is one precinct. The state per precincts should not recognize the A, should recognize it as one precinct. So there is nothing to do on it. Yes, if you forbid a thirteen A, they may create a thirteen A, you know, one, it's one precinct split within the ballots.
What would it be on the ballot when you guys run for precinct commitment? Do you have?
You, thirteen.
You just have one?
Yeah, thirteen. Correct, or, I mean, we, it would be only thirteen, I've never heard of.
The two parties both deal with them in the same way, maybe that's your answer from earlier.
No, mine was a council split.
Don't go back, okay. I'm, I'm not going to bring it back in.
Thank you.
We're not.
It's confusing already. Jessica.
On, I mean, this is the polling location for twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
For the one that houses Shererville seventeen, Shererville twenty, that also ha, or, um, houses center township zero five A.
There's no voters, zero five A, that is going to be the new doors tree farm, once it finally comes in place, there's no voters. It would not let us put it over into a creative license in Shererville, until voters start coming in there. So they need us to keep it as a split there, but there are no voters in that whatsoever, the doors tree.
Well, I guess, I guess what, I wasn't, I mean, I'm referencing that one in particular, it's just, the, the reason that I'm saying that is, again, all of the paperwork is kind of conflicting on this issue, about is this a standing precinct? Is this not a standing precinct? Up to and including, I have two different voter counts, so again, I don't know which way this actually solves out, which is why I said it felt like.
Can we agree that we don't want to create more precincts? In the, in this instance, for these, this is the, this would be tan nine, tan ten, and tan twelve. The point here is to have one precinct, right? Which, according to Michelle, already is the, is the case. According to Jessica, there's discrepancy over what may or may not be the case, but.
Jerry, is your jury knows how that goes, there is not a discrepancy, the difference is, I have a whole lot more knowledge on this, on how it's created, and how.
Okay, well, let me ask Ginny or Jerry, do you guys have any comments on, on this issue?
Precinct breach.
Okay, Ginny, do you have anything to add, or, no, okay.
They have to answer, or may, or it's only one precinct.
Okay.
It's either you get that thirteen or the thirteen A, you have to have separate numbers, because when it goes on the act, when we do reconciliation report, you have to know those voters in the A sections have the A ballot.
Because I think we're all on the same page on this, and what I want to avoid for Jessica's proposal is, what I don't want you to do is us vote a certain way, and then you end up creating three new precincts on accident, right? That's what I want to try to avoid, so, is there a suggestion on how we address the motion on these?
Almost, oh, sorry, to, to think with these three, uh, nine, ten, and twelve, all in tan, um, is to recommend moving forward with the consolidation of them if they are two separate precincts. And not to con, move forward with the consolidation, the state will confirm if there are two precincts, if they are not. If they are not two, two separate precincts?
Leave as is.
Leave as is. If they are two separate precincts, we recommend that they be consolidated.
Okay, hold on, that's a motion, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Angerman, second by Ms. Brandenburg, Michelle, discussion?
Submitting IEC eight, that's saying this is the precinct.
I think what we're saying is we're not going to submit an IEC eight until we make sure, is what I'm getting.
Well, the Secretary of State's office will determine that. I, I think we, we send these forward and say, if they are two precincts, we recommend consolidations. If it is one precinct, we recommend.
Leave as is, right.
Yeah.
There's no, while we're not involved in this, and if you submit an IEC eight with a thirteen A on it, that is creating a precinct for thirteen A.
Well, we're not actually creating anything, Secretary, the, up to the Secretary of State's office. So I, I, I think that gives them both what they're looking for, is, if it's two, then one. If they are both one, then it stays.
Yep, okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? We had a motion by Ms. Angerman, I believe, second by Ms. Brandenburg, third by Clerk Brown. So, uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, but that's for tan nine, ten, and, uh, twelve. And, uh, next then, we'll move to EC, this is blue twenty-one, EC twenty-three and twenty-four. So I think, was this impacted by, I think this might have been, oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, I don't think you heard my no, I'm a no on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was a no, so we had four to one on that, that'd be four to one, and I apologize, Ms. Candela Rieden, thank you for clarifying the record. Motion carried four to one on tan nine, ten, and twelve. Okay, um, we're down to blue twenty-one, which is EC twenty-three and twenty-four. Are we taking, this is for consolidation suggested by, um, Michelle, I believe.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion to approve consolidation of EC twenty-three and twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Candela Rieden, motion by Clerk Brown to consolidate EC twenty-three and twenty-four, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Jessica, yes?
Say that it looks like twenty-one and eleven, tan, or blue twenty-one, tan eleven are basically the, they're different proposals for the same precincts.
Okay, do you want to be heard on tan eleven at this point, or do you want to wait?
I'm, I'm just saying, if you push forward with blue twenty-one, it's fine to affect tan eleven.
Okay, kind of like what happened with, um.
Number eight.
Seven, uh, uh, blue twenty and tans, tan eight, correct?
Uh, yes, so this one would be twenty-one and eleven, yes, right under each other.
Okay, got it. Okay, any, any other discussion?
So can we analyze, focus on?
Yeah, let's do that, sure. So I guess it's just a matter of, um, maybe asking Jessica why she chose twenty-two and twenty-three, and Michelle why she chose twenty-three and twenty-four. And by the way, the numbers appear to be the same, and I think we'd all agree, there's no, there's no difference in cost savings here, we're eliminating one precinct under either proposal. So anybody want to go?
Stop of, um, when Robert Garcia was here last time, he had also talked in regards to this one, he was, um, in approval of this one when he came. Um, so I went with that, he decided for twenty, he was about some place.
Two and three.
Two, three together, so they're far from the two small ones, um, I put two and twenty-three together, just because of my previous split.
Twenty-three, twenty-four together. Okay, so based on Councilman's comments. All right, uh, Jessica, do you want to be heard on why you chose twenty-two and twenty-three versus twenty-three and twenty-four?
Yes, I was putting them at the same jerk, so they, they were going to be housed in the same location, so I wouldn't keep any voter conclusions. So the two precincts were housed at the same location.
Okay.
Going back on the other one, both of twenty-three and twenty-four were small, so we took care of two splits in one, was the reason why we did that one.
Okay, anything else? Okay, uh, the motion is to consolidate, uh, EC twenty-three and twenty-four, which is blue twenty-one. Uh, uh, we've had discussion, all those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye? Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two. Eleven, uh, tan eleven, is there a motion to consolidate these two?
Motion to consolidate.
Motion by Ms. Brandenburg, second by Ms. Angerman, any discussion on this? Okay, um, my vote in, my vote for twenty-one was because of the Councilman's, um.
Right.
Preferences, and I wanted to defer to the elected official in that district.
I agree.
Um, all those in favor of, uh, tan eleven to consolidate twenty-two and twenty-three, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails three to two, two to three. Um, we've dealt with tan twelve, we're on to, um, twenty-three, which goes along with thirteen.
Yes.
So, um, this is Gary two-three, the suggestion is to consolidate it with Gary two-one. I'll entertain a motion regarding that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion to approve the, the tan thirteen, which is consolidating Gary two-one with Gary two-three, any discussion on that? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, second, is there a second?
There's, there's not a second.
There's not a second, okay.
I, I want to, I guess we need a second so I can discuss.
Sure. Sure.
Second.
So the, the motion was to approve Gary two, one and Gary two, three.
So, let me, let me, let me just have the record. The record is that Clerk Brown has made a motion to approve the consolidation of Gary two, one with Gary two, three, which is tan thirteen. We do not have a second on that motion at this time. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll make a second so we can get to discussion.
All right, uh, second by Ms. Angerman, motion by Clerk Brown. Discussion.
The discussion is, it's a question, if I may, it's a question for Michelle. Are you recommending, Michelle, that there is no consolidation and Jessica is recommending a consolidation? Is that what I see the difference here?
That was, but it might have chose to select number thirteen over twenty-three. So that would.
Yeah, I think what we're hearing is that Clerk Brown agrees with the proposal. I, I guess I'll just point Jessica's proposal, so, uh, which is tan thirteen.
Mr. Chair.
Clerk Brown.
The whole concept is anything under six hundred. So what I'm saying is it's under six hundred and it's done right. A motion for us to do it.
Okay, that's good.
All right, any other discussion on approval of tan thirteen then? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Right, that motion carries. Tan thirteen's approved, two, one, and two, three. Next would be, uh, blue twenty-four versus tan fourteen, consolidating Gary four, one with Gary four, fourteen.
Motion to approve Gary fourteen.
Okay, motion by Clerk Brown, second by Ms. Angerman to approve tan fourteen, which is consolidating Gary four, one with Gary fourteen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of them favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right along. Uh, right. Uh, now we have Gary, this is on page four, I think I'm on, uh, tan fifteen, Gary five, two with Gary six, seven. Both are above six hundred and it appears there might be a split in the city council on this, but I will entertain a motion to, to approve this, or if we want to have some pre-discussion, I'm okay with that, too.
Motion to approve consolidation on fifteen.
Okay, motion by Ms. Brandenburg to approve tan fifteen, which is Gary five, two.
Oh, make a second.
Second by Ms. Angerman. Jessica, my question, I'm sorry, I don't want to.
That's enough. I think we're asking the same question.
Okay, um, Jessica, just confirming, you would, do you agree that this would create a split in the city council by consolidating these two?
Mr. Chair.
Clerk Brown.
I lost it.
We are at tan fifteen.
Yes, it's split in the council.
Yeah, it's split in the council. These are, these are actually in two different, just by their own numbers alone, they're in different districts, right?
So, Mr. Chair, my concern is both of them are already over six hundred. We've conceded with the state regarding any precinct below six hundred. As I said before, you just can't have it both ways.
Okay.
So I cannot support that at all.
And I guess my comment would be on this is that I have the same concern I did in the other one where we create splits within the city council. I think that creates an issue with having one precinct committee person that potentially could, could vote on two different vacancy caucuses. Any other discussion on this?
Can you speak to the polling locations or anything? Is there any other information we're missing here?
The reason that it was, it was initially in a church and it was moved to the Kennedy Branch Library. Again, to get it into a building. And again, with all of these polling locations, period, we know they're ADA compliant and everything else because they have to be via poll location in the first place. So yes, it's location rental and it was.
Okay. Any other questions of staff or discussion? All right, hearing none. There is a motion to consolidate G five, two with G six, seven. A vote in favor would be consolidation. A vote against would be against forwarding this to the Secretary of State for that consideration. All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. I'm sorry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, motion fails, uh, three to two. All right, next is a blue eight, which is a consolidation of Gary five, thirteen with Gary five, six. Looks like it would be to eliminate five, thirteen, which is below six hundred.
It is, but when you look at five, sixteen, there's nothing going on with that other than recommendation because it doesn't touch.
I'm sorry, I meant five, six. This is blue eight.
Six, the, the per consolidation of thirteen and sixteen, the others would be open up there. That is not a three, it's only council split. On the blue eight, that period split, although that gives five, sixteen out there paying, uh, which the recommendation because it is a different kind of house in a different house, would have been to first that for voting purposes, so it's going to be up front. That would have been, it would have been under the six hundred mark. It was just a recommendation that probably have another precinct for voting purposes because you can't touch it with a different house. Now, it's a bit that far away. So.
So, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Clerk Brown and Ms. Angerman.
You talking about putting five, thirteen with five, six together?
That was the original recommendation in number eight.
Okay.
Yes. Five, sixteen, which is on the left one, did not have any place to go. Now I could, if it was open to go back, it's that there takes some, another precinct and merge it into there. But at this point in time, precincts that are small in nature like that, merge it to another precinct for voting purposes. And again, if that was to move in, if sixteen touches thirteen and it touches twenty somewhere, you could do thirteen and sixteen, but we're out. I agree, it's a house discussed. So somewhere along the line, you're either going to have one voting with another precinct for election day purposes, or you will create your own council split.
All right, so I'm going to ask Jess, I don't know if Jessica wants to be heard on this or not. It looks like we're talking about three different precincts here. We're talking about Gary thir- five, thirteen, Gary five, six, and Gary five, sixteen.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And your suggestion in tan sixteen is to consolidate G thirteen with sixteen and leave Gary five, six as is over five hundred. But that your proposal would create a split in the county council. Race, okay. And Michelle's suggestion is combine five, thirteen with five, six.
Right.
Leave five, sixteen as is.
Right.
And because it doesn't create a split.
Right.
If you will resolution later on, you may give vote to someone else.
Five, sixteen.
So that we still would be seeing the same significant purpose.
Okay. Questions? I think we had, had a comment here. Or she's looking at her.
I, I'm trying to scroll through.
I'm at page sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
Where I'm at. On tab six. I'm sorry, tab five, page sixty-four. Look like they're all next to each other, huh? They're all right there. They're all, Mike, are you seeing?
Fifteen, sixteen, and five, six. Where's five, six?
Five, six, just to the left of those three. If you zoom in with like a pinch, a little bit, yeah.
Oh, I see.
The blue one.
Okay. So one proposal is five, thirteen and five, six.
One proposal is five, thirteen and five, six.
Is.
Thirteen and sixteen.
And sixteen.
Leaving six alone. Six is the bigger one.
Split, one of them does not.
Correct. Thirteen and sixteen combined, which is the red outline, creates a split.
What would the preference have been?
What would the what have been?
For Jessica, what would the, what would the preference for thirteen and six be?
I mean, we just didn't touch six, um, for whatever reason. I'm, I'm not sure that I'm necessarily opposed to.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't, kind of doesn't make sense there.
It's a first, it's chairman of the mayor's that have spoken to him, but I, I.
Yeah.
I mean, it's slightly bigger, but it's still thirteen, sixty, thirteen, seventy. If you went, oh, I think that does create a split.
Right. That's the problem with thirteen, sixteen, it creates a split. Whereas thirteen and six do not.
So, is there objection? I, is there an objection that I'm missing between five, thirteen and five, six?
No, there's no objection.
Not on our, not on ours, not over here.
We're good with that.
So I think that's the one.
And then leave sixteen like there's.
There wouldn't have to be any action. Will there be any action?
So it would be.
Wouldn't do any action.
Right, technically.
Right.
So it would be.
Approval of blue eight.
To combine G five, thirteen and G five, six.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I, I think what I would mention next, if that does pass, I would say there's no action on blue twenty-five, no action on sixteen unless I hear a motion. I certainly will be.
Five is just with the recommendation into the Secretary of State that we are not consolidating at this point in time. Our recommendation is to merge it together for voting day purposes. B, that it would create a split.
Right. Okay.
The rest of it, so that would be sensible.
For the record.
Okay.
Who are you combining it with on election day?
We'll have to put a resolution together for that when we get to that.
For like a, a combined, combined.
Combined board.
Consolidated resolution ready, Chair. One board. They'll have their own separate ballot.
So, so this would now become five, six, and there would be a combined consolidated between the new five, six and five, sixteen. Is that what you're saying?
You could do it that way.
Sweet sixteen's going. I hadn't talked to anybody for the chairman to say what's close to vicinity.
Okay.
I have a big recommendation, so deep purchase based on, we look at the polling places to where it's at, that is exactly what if the recommendation be.
And with those, we like to get input by both the Republican and Democratic chairs. Yep.
To say what you're doing, you can't.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'd like to make that motion that we had the discussion regarding, uh, item eight and item twenty-five on the blue sheet.
So blue eight, uh, the motion is to consolidate G five, thirteen with G five, six.
Yes.
And that to inform the Secretary of State why we kept G five, sixteen as is, and then we will be voting with one board at another location to be determined and agreed to by both chairman, hopefully.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I mean, instead of having just one split, I get one savings on the T N plan.
Yep.
You're actually saving on chair.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Angerman, motion by Clerk Brown. Any further discussion on, um, this is taking blue eight and blue twenty-five. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to the staff for that information. It was beneficial. Um, I assume there's going to be no action on tan sixteen unless I hear it now. Hearing none, moving to tan seventeen. Uh, we've got Griffith one and Griffith fifteen. It appears the idea here would be to consolidate due to Griffith fifteen being under five hundred. Um, however, it does create a split in the county commissioner district. Jessica, yep?
See, it's being taken into account on, on the method plan. So it will still be being addressed, um, but now I'm having a split.
Okay, Jessica, I want you to be able to address, uh, your seventeen versus, I guess, Michelle's twenty-eight. And whether you have a preference.
G R oh, one and G R fifteen, uh, is moved on to a government building, we're down to the cost savings. So it would be moving to the north by our state to have it finished. I did speak with, um, the Republican, uh, Chair in Griffith, and he was amenable to changes as they were. Um, they were having some issues with certain polling locations not having any, um, parking or available, um, for candidates to put signs and stuff up because there was either asphalt where it was, or it was too close to the entrance. So they were, um, hoping that we could potentially move some of these to more grassy and open areas so that they can.
Have signs. And you're, and so, Michelle, on blue twenty-eight, it takes, uh, twelve into consideration. Your tan eighteen, I think, would be the one that addresses that. Do you want to just talk about that real quick? And why you decided to go to twelve? I'm sure it is because of what you did in seventeen.
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing. So it's the same, and it's the same polling location and it eliminates the two, uh, two small precincts at the same time. So are two smaller precincts.
Okay. So, Michelle, what's the, what's the issue with this one? Because I, maybe I'm missing this.
So, and, and the difference is on Griffith two, because Griffith two is still small and she addresses that with twenty, twelve.
Yeah.
On Griffith two, um, what the suggestion would is taking some from Griffith eleven, moving it into two, um, that just equalizes it there. I don't have any house splits.
But I mean, I guess to me, it seems a lot cleaner to not have to deal with chopping off something from eleven. And I mean, that's just me. I sorry. Go ahead, Michelle.
I would rather have a couple blocks, census blocks and move it in there. I can have a split that is going to give you a potential recount. Valid errors if you've been. I think, you know, cutting off that two or three blocks and where the census blocks, there's much cleaner option than create this split.
Jessica, do you want to address that issue?
I, I guess I just want to make an overall statement on splits in general. We have the abilities to deal with that now with the encoders. We have that at multiple different precincts. So, um, we already have the technology to do that. All you're doing is putting a card into a machine. It's going to pull up the correct ballot. So yes, there are some small minor incidents where that may not work, but we've been using the encoders for a very long time.
Okay, yeah, I was talking about the issue of like the census block. Issue. I don't know if you have any, I mean, if you have a comment, if you don't have a.
It's easier to align the two as opposed to splitting census blocks. It, it just makes it a little bit cleaner and easier for staff and the Secretary of State, everyone to deal with if we're not splitting on census blocks when we don't need to.
And I don't think we've heard anything from the Democratic chairman in Griffith, just. Oh, well, that's probably why we haven't heard.
Seven, she's going to create a commissioner and council split. I do not split whenever possible. It's just going to be a finding.
Yeah, and we haven't got to five and seven, right?
Put up a hole because things are going in different directions.
Does, okay, so not to skip ahead, but does Jessica's proposal in tan seventeen, uh, impact anything in blue unmarked and nine, tan nineteen?
Seventeen will affect number twenty-eight. It's probably using fifteen.
That's twenty-eight. Oh, twenty-eight, okay. Right, I'm stuck. I know that.
She that hasn't remembered because that was like a later submission is in her number eighteen. So two and twelve are showing up there, right?
Okay.
So you have one, you don't remember.
So the, the, the precincts that I see that we're dealing with right now are Griffith one, fifteen, or one, two, twelve, and fifteen. Is that fair? Or am I missing something? One, two, twelve, and fif- we're trying to figure out how to, what to do with one, two, twelve, and fifteen.
Right.
And the ones. Well, it is in tan seventeen, because Jessica's proposal is to combine it with fifteen. So I'm just, all right, so I think the, what we're suggesting here is either we're going to combine one and fifteen, or we're going to combine twelve and fifteen. Or we're going to combine two and twelve. If we combine twelve and fifteen, we got to pull three blocks out of eleven. If we don't, we're talking about one and fifteen and two and twelve being combined. With the information we do have from the Griffith Town Chair, of which there's only one, that they like the grassy area at the new polling place.
She's always speaks on grassy area.
No, I understand. I just want to at least, I just want to at least acknowledge the comment.
Yeah, it's because the shoot itself is the entire area, the radius of like the polling location.
That's the current problem. At the current pla- I don't want to say problem, the current place.
It's the entire shoot radius, like radius.
No, no, I appreciate that. I, I, that's the kind of stuff, like, I think that goes to what we talked earlier, that like the boots on the ground type of information. I appreciate that, that kind of stuff. So, um, okay.
I just, I need some more information, Mr. Chair, about what.
Clerk Brown.
Uh, uh, thanks. I just want some more information so we can get a little more clarity. Regarding what's the best route, because I see, you know, I see two, um, different, um, submissions and, I mean, both of them sort of make sense to some degree, but both of them have splits at the same time.
Well, I mean, there's a difference in terminology for split.
Right.
So a split for like the ballot, it's going to be you see split in commissioners.
Right. Right.
The only other split we're talking is where we would be cutting off a lot of blocks. And it does make it nice and packed still. Where it was easier to cut off a few blocks from eleven to put in the two. I think in the end, the difference in money wise, I think. Would be one, would be one reason.
Yeah, it's negligible in that instance. I, I just, yeah, to me, I'm, I'm weighing this whole split in county commissioner, which is, to me, is a little bit different. Yeah, it's negligible in that instance, I, I just, yeah, to me, I'm, I'm weighing this whole split in county commissioner, which is, to me, is a little bit different than city council.
Right.
I mean, just me looking at it, I guess, versus splitting off county, or I'm sorry, census blocks. That's, that's where I'm struggling, is trying to weigh which is the better decision here.
Okay.
Alright, Jessica, anything else on this? Alright, so we're talking about tan seventeen at this point. Is that fair, where we're at, okay. Entertained a motion regarding tan seventeen.
Um, can we go back a second?
Sure, yes.
I have one question, so, and Jessica's, there, there's two consolidations, and Michelle's, there's one consolidation, and then moving census blocks into Griffith two to make it bigger.
I think that's fair.
So that it's not.
Treats two and three. There has two consolidations, hers has three consolidations, and yes, that, then the second part of your part was right there, with the other one to there. Well, that's why I said that the dollar comes down.
Okay.
The words, does that make sense?
But, right, but in the, in this situation, what you're doing is, is you're taking something that's under six hundred, and you're moving census blocks into it, so now it's over six hundred, and therefore not subject to consolidation. So it's just jumbling things around to make it less.
That we're supposed to split.
It's the preference of the size and the requirement to consolidate for under six hundred versus.
Right.
Getting a split.
It's, it's, yeah.
I don't know that we have that kind of latitude.
Yeah, I meant, yeah, that's, um, so I think we would have to take tan eighteen into consideration with tan seventeen, are we taking these individually?
Um, I think we go individually.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move forward with recommending Griffith one and Griffith fifteen to the Secretary of State for consideration.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Angerman, second by Ms. Brandonberg, to consolidate Griffith one and Griffith fifteen. Any discussion? I guess my comment on, on this is that I just, I do see that there's a split, and I've been very consistent with not liking splits, however, I am concerned about the other alternative, which is to split census blocks, and I don't, I just don't know where we stand on that, or where we, where we stand on that, or how we, statutorily, if we have that right or not, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I know we've probably done it in the past, I just don't know.
Think that would be more in line with redistricting rather than.
Yeah.
Small precinct consolidation.
I guess we have looked at that, and that's what we used to call it, small precinct consolidation.
Yeah, so remember that.
Yes.
That's what I'm here for.
It's coming back. Okay, so the motion is to consolidate one and fifteen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then.
Yes.
I don't, uh, I don't think we need to address Griffith, unless I hear a motion, I don't think there needs to be any action on blue twenty-eight or Griffith two at this time.
No.
Okay, no motion, no action, and then we will look at Griffith, I'm sorry, tan eighteen now, which is Griffith two and Griffith twelve, is there a motion to consolidate those two?
Motion to consolidate.
Motion, Ms. Brandonberg, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Angerman, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, now we're down to what looks to be a discussion over Griffith five and six versus Griffith five and seven. It looks like blue does not create a split, and the tan nineteen does create a split in commissioner and county council. Outside of that, any discussion by either Michelle or Jessica on their proposals? No, okay.
Motion to approve.
Uh, I, Clerk Brown, I assume you made a motion to approve Griffith five and six?
Five and six, blue.
To consolidate, is that right? Blue, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Candelara Reardon, motion by Clerk Brown, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Angerman.
Of course I do.
Yes.
You thought you got off easy.
I was close, I was, no, no, I knew I wouldn't.
There's obviously a, a pretty significant difference in the numbers that are affected here, that it would become, what? A very large precinct in the first one, to avoid the split in Griffith five and Griffith seven. Is there a reason, Jessica, for, what were the thoughts behind combining five and seven?
Um, I was to eliminate the small precincts of Griffith five, again, saving on the cost of the board, savings of a rental, it's one of the polling locations would be to go down.
Okay, any other questions?
I face it is still consolidating the precinct without the split, which no one counts.
Yep, that's the way I see it, okay. Any discussion? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brandonberg.
They have is just the very different numbers here that this would create, I mean, that, the consolidation of five and six would create quite a large precinct in comparison to, I, I guess I don't understand if there's, is it more cumbersome to create a split versus to create a very large precinct where you're potentially burdening, burdening voters in that regard?
Yeah, I think that's the, that's, you've hit the nail on the head, I think that's the issue, and I'm, yeah, that's exactly right. Good question.
It's a more confusion between voters, candidates, poll voters, when voters walk in there and seeing all these signs for different people, they will be confused as they enter to the polling places to lose people on my ballot. So they, they will sit there and say, hey, I'm not doing this one, with the cause lines at the polling place, because we stop the boarders for clarification, see that, yes, we want to be correct district, so. In essence, having splits will cause lines in many cases, because voters get in there and say, hey, I just saw this person, or I got this piece of mail, and you're wrong, so you can find the voters to double check it. And so that will stop the lines, so, again, the, the end of all the same dollar, I don't think there's a much growth still going on within Griffith. So I would vote in shoes, maybe a little bit more over a split.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to consolidate Griffith five and six, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Alright, abstaining, you got an extension?
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no on that one, I just think it, it creates such a large precinct. There is a difference in cost because you're, I, I think it's just the polling location is, is the only cost.
So the motion carries three, one, one. Given that, I assume, although, of course, we're happy to entertain a motion, that tan nineteen is no longer, any action needed on that, given the action of the board on, on the blue one above it? But I'm, is there any motion on five and seven?
I do make a motion to forward it.
Okay, motion to.
For consideration, I mean, that one's really tough, because it's kind of, you know, half a dozen of one and six the other.
I agree. Alright, we have motion, Ms. Angerman, a second by Ms. Brandonberg regarding tan nineteen to approve that consolidation, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying, by saying aye?
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
Motion fails three to two. Uh, alright, Anna Hammond, Chairman Rakos. I know you're here, but I, I don't think we necessarily need you unless we need you, and you want to be heard on this, but we have a suggestion to combine Hammond one, one with Hammond one, seven, these are both over six hundred. Jessica, anything else besides the, I assume, cost consideration? Alright, any questions of staff by the board? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding tan twenty?
I will make the motion to combine for twenty.
Okay, motion to combine. We have a second, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. is that Ms. Angerman with the motion? Ms. Angerman with the second, Ms. Brandonberg with the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. I voted because of the over six hundred. Alright, now, we have two, five, and which is blue thirty, and then we have tan twenty-one, two, five, and two, fourteen.
Okay, so on this.
Michelle?
The two, five, and two, fourteen creates a county council split. So, in order to keep from doing the county council split, we need still, on the blue plan, still be eliminating two, five, so it's not like, I was out the same. It would be a matter here of moving census blocks and taking north of the river into two, three, and south of the river into two, six, that makes it easier on the voters for where their polling places to be though. Based on where it's at, it doesn't create a split, it still is taking into account that you are still consolidating that precinct, which is a different way of moving it around. They will, um, if you're having a split.
Hey, Jessica, do you want to be heard on this one?
It's the same as I said, but, um, where is it going to the public library for all statements?
Okay.
Also, the other one would be going to Vermin School, on the other option, which is also still a cost savings, because it is going to a public school, and these, so, and this one, two, six, are still going to, the, I'm not sure if I'm reading this. Mr. Rakos could tell us.
Turner Park?
So either way, there is the savings, saving that, because we are taking it now.
Okay, Chairman Rakos, I know you're here, you've been very patient, do you want to be heard on this, just want to make sure that if someone is present on any of these, they are heard?
I'm almost hesitant to, uh, because the councilman, I, I only had a chance to talk to him very briefly. He doesn't have a problem with consolidation as, as listed, but after talking to Ms. Famon, I, I understand, it, it seems like it would be a better situation with split.
Alright.
Because.
There's much.
See, I told you, I was hesitant to, to do this.
Alright, so it's, so as chairman, are you, I don't want to say you're endorsing any either plan, but we're, you talked to Councilman Salinas, it sounds like.
I'm okay either way, I, I do know that, that Ms. Famon made a, a lot of, did a lot of work on that.
Okay. And Councilman Salinas, where does he stand on this?
He said he'd be, he'd be okay with consolidating, he doesn't want to consolidate it all, but, because of the two, five, or two, fourteen.
Just as, um, just for a map purpose, if you want to see it.
Yeah, is there a page number on this?
So you're just reading the good on there.
Okay.
This here, yellow section is all two, five, okay? So that would be taking this whole two, five, and people are going to go down State Street, okay? This here, broken at the river, these guys would go up here to the school, and there's like an industrial area here, and these guys down here would be going to Turner Park. So these guys are closer to this precinct, these guys are closer to this precinct, it's just saying that these census blocks now would be associated there. It was just a way of trying to give an option without creating a split. Trying to involve that, and ask for you.
Yeah, and the other thing I would, I just mentioned, and I guess I have a little better knowledge, you know, on this, is that I know that the second district already has less precincts in it than the other districts within the city of Hammond.
Six.
We go, and, and I know that, that if there is a vacancy, and I get, and again, I'm not saying this doesn't impact other cities, I'm just looking at this totally from a Hammond perspective, because that's where I live, and, and hang on. Is that, that, if there's a, a citywide caucus, the districts have disparate voting in that, you know, in that citywide caucus, I would also note that this district is probably the most heavily Hispanic district in our city, is that fair? Okay, so I just want to, just weighing on me a little bit as I consider the, these proposals, even though I, I know we'd be doing something a little different than I just voted a little bit ago, so that's what else is troubling me, but I, I, this is a tough one for me.
Yeah, I mean, you know the area best.
Yep.
Person for the voter to go and get to the office, like with the split that I made, hardest one, the fear that the sanctuary looks like it's just straight across, the ones over here, kind of here versus the top and bottom, all coming down to the bottom.
That is true.
I mean, I'm just trying to also figure the voter proximity wise, because there is a large section in the middle that looks industrial.
It is.
Now you're going through an industrial area to be able to get through polling places, I, I was trying to help it out to that, but now.
Clerk Brown, I'm, I'm sorry, Jessica, sorry, I was looking at maps here.
Take that into account, so there's approximately a one mile driving distance between my proposal for the two precincts, um, it's about a six minute driving distance.
And what were the, what was the voting locations, if you have them?
That is what it would be moved to.
No, I think that's the fourth district, we're in the second, we're in. Yep, that's okay, at least I know this part of the town.
Sorry. Wrong one.
That's okay, that's okay, yeah, we all are, it's getting, we've been here a while. This is, I'm sorry, this is your tan twenty-one, which is two, five, and two, fourteen. So do you want to potentially revise your comments? Okay, yep.
So this one would be a one mile driving distance, five minute, or I'm sorry, one mile driving distance, five minute driving.
And the locations?
Hammond Public Library and two, five, um, Hast, I don't know what Hast is.
That's the Charter School on Unit Court right downtown, so, so that's, uh, those are pretty much, those are pretty close. I would, I mean, unless you're catching a train, it's probably not even five minutes, so. Yeah, I'm surprised it's that much, actually, to tell you the truth. Library to Hast. Yes, Ms. Brandonberg?
I'm just concerned again about splitting off portions and, and moving census blocks, because I don't know that we have the latitude to do that, that was our concern on the last vote, so, you know.
It's still consolidating, when you're cutting the precinct, the precinct is being, saying, clearly, it's not here, this is not consolidating, it's not going to go here, first one, it'll go here, so you're still consolidating, so do you?
Clerk Brown?
I'm still trying to decide, because, you know, I'm trying to abide with the state's issue, but at the same time, I'm looking at the maps, and I'm also looking at the simple fact that we had a situation similar to that in the Garridge precinct, where we only had three hundred and eighty-eight registered voters, and we have to make an adjustment to that, so.
Which one was that, Clerk Brown, do you know, which one was that?
Three, sixteen, G five, sixteen.
G five, sixteen?
Right.
Or he kept it, right?
Right, kept it, so this is sort of falls under special circumstances, like three, sixteen, in a sense.
Like, to me, I would, that's a good point that Clerk Brown brings up, Michelle, is that, like, I would prefer, if we're not going to split, that instead of doing census blocks, that we let, that we let the Secretary of State know why we're keeping this, versus why, versus moving census blocks in, because then I think that addresses Ms. Brandonberg's concern. You know, that it'd be a small precinct that we're keeping because of X, if we go that route.
But I don't think it meets the requirements in three, six, five, two.
So that's the problem you see.
Yeah, well, actually, I, I think it's not in three dash six dash five point two dash ten, there's, there are separate statutes that tell you what you can and can't, barriers that you can and can't fill. And there's no listing that says, because it violates this rule, like crossing a house line or a senate line, or.
Right.
Something like that.
I, I handed them, Ms. Brandonberg, the change, I have the reference from the Secretary of State.
Thank you.
It's been lasting, but I should get past it down, so.
I also want to point out, it's just weird. County office, I agree that it doesn't say that we, yes, but county council, county commissioner, around city houses. Keep in mind that the city councils, the county commissioner, county councils, create the districts, they are not allowed to cross precinct lines. So it just seems like it's backwards, that they cannot create. Split precincts, they are creating the districts, and yet we can cut it, we'll be to our side, and they can't do it, plus they're showing that is, you know, to make sure. Or that's thinking in some ways, I think we are still consolidating, you know, getting rid of the precincts. We're just choosing to send it in a different direction than taking the whole entirety. My question on third, when, on twenty-one, she was going with two, five number, when two, fourteen is bigger, not, if you go with that plan, usually the larger, where you say is, is the number you, I understand that they're trying to keep a lower number, it makes a difference, but I'm just saying that is different than how we normally done.
Or do you would keep two, fourteen?
I don't think it really, really matters, it's just more voters know that they've done this two, fourteen. It's just, it, in this case, you're both losing two, five, it's just the difference of creating a split, or you be split, north of the river, and to the river. Because then there's a matter, I mean, I can see every time, city wants, I again, just owes, split council.
Okay, uh, entertaining. Okay, uh, entertain a motion regarding blue thirty.
I make a motion to, to approve it based on the special circumstances for number thirty, blue.
Okay, uh, motion to approve, I guess, keeping, um, two five then. No.
Are you keeping two five or splitting it?
Well.
Since there is split to go into, already two three.
I'm, I'm making a motion for the item thirty, blue. That's what my motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, motion to approve item thirty, blue.
Thirty, blue. That's what's the motion. Not twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'm a scoundrel, read and motion my clerk Brown discussion. Um, this is a tough one for me, because I guess my vote on this goes to what I was concerned about earlier, which is the, we really didn't discuss, but I just let everybody know my concern, which is keeping the second district kind of on par with the other ones. Who knows what the Secretary of State will do with this? I have no idea whether we have the ability to start messing with census blocks or not. But my vote is entirely based upon my comments earlier regarding the second district, so. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all's in favor, send by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries three, two. Is there a motion regarding two five and two fourteen, which is tan twenty-one?
I make a motion to move forward, um, to move forward with recommending the consolidation to the Secretary of State. However, um, Michelle, are you saying that there's a recommendation somewhere to keep the name H two five?
I'm just asking that if, I just wanted to point out that normally in the task, whatever the larger precinct, which is the one that we've kept.
So we'd keep two fourteen.
When you're looking at numbers, it's easier to go from small to top.
True.
Whatever you guys decide to do.
I can tell you from, anecdotally, that I used to be a resident of, or voter in Hammond four one, and it got consolidated with four ten or four eleven or something, and I think it's four ten, and it's four ten. It didn't keep four one, right, even, because four ten was larger, so. Went larger, so. It's scoundrel area, rude. I'm, I'm sorry, let me, hold on, Mr. Chairman, Jessica.
I just want to say for the record, I don't, the name is irrelevant.
Sure.
We're going with the lower numbers, so if there is a genuine reason, which there would be, it's a number.
Objection to that. Alright, Leanne, did you have something before I asked Chairman Raykos?
No, go, go.
Alright, Chairman Raykos.
Well, I'm checking, we keep the number two five.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Just speaking.
Alright. Alright, alright, uh, any further discussion on, uh, proposal twenty-one? I guess.
I would, sorry.
No, no, go right ahead.
To be consistent, if we, we've always kept, to my knowledge, the larger precinct is sort of the dominant precinct number. And so I would recommend to, to make the consolidation or recommend the consolidation, but keeping the, the name of it two fourteen, just because that's the larger precinct. I mean, I.
Yeah, I, I think we should remain consistent with what we've done in the past, but I get it. But we can, polling place comes up to us at a whole nother, I mean, we could, we could change every polling place we've talked about today, right? I mean, we, we've done, so. Clark, we're, I'm done.
I'm sorry, I just have a, a technical note. Um, I don't see the I E C eight for two fourteen.
Right, just, just for staffs.
You wouldn't see it? Yes, okay, can I clarify that one?
Yes.
So initially, when I was doing this, I made one sheet for each precinct, because I was under the impression that that's how it was.
Right.
On them, I wrote formally, you know, whichever one it was. Um, in order to make it cleaner and to do it, I guess, correctly, I made one sheet. So the numbers, um, that you're seeing in this packet would be the, the precinct combined order.
But I'm fourteen already combined.
Yes, so you would see the numbers of active voters and inactive voters, polling location. It would be if that's assumed that that becomes one new precinct together.
Double check on that. I, I think in the past, we always had to have all precincts affected, have a, have a, had to have an I E C eight.
What I would, what I would say is that whatever way we're supposed to do it, let's just make sure we do it the right way.
I'm trying to have it all the ways, so.
Okay, good idea.
Okay.
Michelle, you agree with that?
If, I, I agree that in the past, we had submitted with both of them having that, they'd be, so we moved that sheet because you weren't eliminating. When you were creating an I E C eight, that is saying this is the precinct. So if you're eliminating, you don't have a page for it. So what happens if this one is approved, she can change the name to the top, from Hammond two, two, the.
Two fourteen.
Two fourteen, two, two, two fourteen, right now it says two five. And then down at the bottom, it says precincts affected, they can say two.
Okay, two fourteen. So we're just.
Safety, we're trying to, that's the name of your precinct. The confusion comes, we used to admit another I E C with another number on it. Absolutely disconfusing, and I saw the old Lake Station, seven eight, square eight.
Okay, so we'll double check with how they want it, I guess, just to make sure we're doing it right.
Like I said, I have both of them, because I didn't know if one was right, so.
Yep, and I guess the way I would, um, just to comment for the record, I, what I would say on this is that if blue thirty is somehow not approved, that, um, you know, I'm going with what the chairman said, which is the councilman's fine with this split, but at this point, I went with blue thirty. Alright, um, uh, any other discussion regarding tan twenty-one? The motion is to consolidate H two five and two fourteen. All those in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye, so that motion fails three to two. Okay, looks like we've got several other in Hammond, however, just in kind of reviewing, this is tan twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. I've noted that every one of those are over, um, six hundred, except, oh wait, I better, I take, take that back. I'm sorry, I'm looking at just the Hammond ones, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
That's Highland.
Good lord, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Once again, I've created more problems.
You just gave each.
District over. Yes, sir. Okay. Yep, Beth, need a break? Alright, Beth needs a break. That's more important, thank you. Look at me. Not, I've probably taken a thousand depositions as well, but maybe I'm not as nice to court reporters as you are. Do I have a motion that will go into a brief recess?
Motion to recess.
Alright, so, right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are in recess at twelve twenty-nine.
Forty.
Uh, we'll call it five minutes, or I guess as long as it takes for me to get back, five to ten minutes?
I mean, because I cannot start it again.
Don't, yeah, we don't want you to have to do that. We're off the record, however. Off the record. Even the dog has to go to the bathroom, so. Alright. Oh, yeah. Yes, as is, I mean, again, don't forget.
You know where these are, though?
There are, oh, like, think of it this way, we're in Hammond, now you have to get through Winfield.
My turn. Obviously, I am interested. That's it?
Uh, that, no, we have, no, we, we have to get, we're alphabetical, we're in Hammond, we got to get through Highland, Over.
Mustard.
Mustard, Lake Station, Maryville, Schneider, I don't know where else. St. John's, Whiting. Okay, well, we.
That, I, it doesn't matter to me, I was just trying to do, but as a voter, they think of options. I just hate splits, and I know when the voter gets in there, it's just, they make a whole set of options, so I'm saying, what else? I thought I was scared, but I actually, I don't think it's consolidation.
My God, I was literally, and I was trying to think of, where can those?
Uh, many years ago, there was a director from the Secretary of State Legislature, to take a look at our precincts, yes. There was a, you can look it up online, there was a big, uh, five court opinions over it. Ultimately, the statute was upheld and solidified.
So is there a deadline to it, or?
Uh, September, August one.
August one, oh.
That's why we're here today, a special meeting.
So this will all be forwarded, whatever.
Yeah, it'll all be forwarded, and then the Secretary of State will kind of weigh it and decide where, where he's going on.
Things change at the last minute. We, we know what we're doing, yeah.
I mean, we're still on the record, too.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to stay and watch for more, or, I mean, I think we've got, how much do we have left?
Um, a lot.
We're halfway through.
Well, that wasn't helpful.
Yeah.
Last, you know, half full.
That's all we've been through, is a page and a half? No, we're, we've done two pages, and we have one and a half left.
Twenty-something, and we got to get up to forty-something, maybe?
I wish I could have just, like, moved everything into one document, though.
I mean, that would have been good.
Yeah.
I went to bed, I think it's also to make sure it's still recording, because the last time you turned it off, that's a perfect thing. I'm like, no, it's fine, you have to turn it off. Yes, we can pause it, and it was at birthright as we drew it before. It's just, you know, it's like. Does anybody have time? I'm getting your office chair. So let me just make sure.
I do, but I might.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, God bless you, it's for me.
Oh, for you?
Yes, I had root canal yesterday.
Oh, no. So when Randy texted me last night, I'm like, I got to let you know in the morning. I mean, I had, they're like, oh, you won't have any pain, like, after. Liars.
Oh, no.
Liars, it hurts so badly.
I'm really hungry. I haven't even usually eaten.
Thank you, Carly.
Usually I'm like in my office, walking on my walking pad, and that distracted me.
I think I have a lovely chocolate pudding sitting at home waiting for me. Yes, well, not just kids, but. Actually, I switched over, I do the Lipton cup of soup a lot.
Oh, yeah.
That's like something quick and easy. And I could do it here, just out of that.
Yeah, where they're like in the.
See, that's why I get disappointed, I go to all these, these restaurants where they're like ramen, and I expect what, and what we know is a brahman noodles, and it's really not.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on this afternoon? I respect some rain. We have more than half, right?
Always forgot to set the agenda, there's other things. Um, this may be the bulk.
Wow, what else do we have on the agenda yet?
School, or school, or, but that, that, that's probably be a very strict. No, maybe we are almost, we got.
Well, then, then Steve here pointed out, well, you're halfway done. I'm like, oh my God.
The camera's talking to the reporter, and it's just going through all the cities that we still have yet to do.
Yeah, we're in Hammond, and so we started, I don't know how I went through the rest of the album. The sun is burning.
I hope so. Yeah, I think so, because the.
No, this is okay, I separated them, because sometimes you can't hear some of the microphones, depending on if they like blow each other out. So I have that to override the audio for the future. Because for some reason, it, I don't know, but you have to be talking to voters with these mics, something happens.
Yeah.
Be horrible messes. So I'm just, I think, just something to sound good about, and people can.
I think I'm going to save myself, and I'm setting people up.
Everyone else is, every, everyone else has.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, maybe. You may need to be. I had a root canal yesterday. I had a root canal yesterday, so it's definitely more talking than I wanted.
I might have another packet.
I didn't know.
More.
I was told I could take four.
Do you want the other two? Or is it here, it's even touch?
Um, it hurts a little bit, but he, he didn't tell me to do that before root canal.
Well, I don't know, I was.
Do you want these two?
Sometimes it.
I'm going to set these right here in case I'm tempted to take two more.
Yeah, I have no idea what's in there, so I'm just asking, do they have you?
You know what helped more? I think just from previous, is I did saltwater gargles, and that helped. Um, last night, I was, but I can feel myself getting hot, and it's like, I wonder if it's the infection. Well, hey, how are you? Nice to see you, too. Yeah, what did you do?
So we might carry Ryan, well, that one day he was limping, so I took his stuff to the eight, and I actually got a wolf leg. And so I was just a desk, and I drove, you know, so Mike had run over the four, and he was limping. And so he went down the stairs in the garage like sideways, and I was trying to see if it's front hips, is it front, is it off, where is he limping at? And I was focused on him, and I put our little step down.
Oh, I couldn't put it out.
I'm rushing, I, I put it on.
It's very twisted, you think?
I think so.
Sounds right.
Because I could use, I could use my toes that night, I just, I saw that, and next day I have to walk. And so now I'm on my seat. But like, oh, that's true. Because they are, I, so you'll be able to go through. And then the main side page and pull up meeting, uh, because it's late, it's still.
Takes freezing?
I didn't know that.
It is just some of those. Friday, real.
And you can wiggle all your toes and.
Or it's the end was still very swollen.
That's bad. Yeah, I love my, I love my phone, I think.
We haven't gotten to the special, and then they have important stuff.
That's what I thought, I thought.
Yeah. I mean.
This, this stuff is important.
So that reduces calories. Yeah. I bet that's cold. It's not just below thirty-two. That fits below. It'll take it below freezing without freezing it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you got my pen.
Alright, so you're feeling good? Ready to go? She is. Fallon always, you guys want, I hope you know that.
Yeah.
And, um.
Yes.
You knew it was going to be a long one.
We'll take him on that.
Yeah, they didn't mention that. Yeah, they didn't mention that.
Yes.
I'm still Thursday, I'm barely getting back to myself. Things are just like moving along so quickly, a lot of older speakings. If we could tone it down just a little bit, I know we might get through this pretty late.
We definitely want to get through it.
We'll streamline.
All right. All right, here we go, uh, we're back on the, uh, coming out of recess, it is, uh, twelve forty-two, I don't know if I need a motion. Do we need? All right, motion to come out of recess.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to come out of recess, all in favor, should anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, uh, we are now out of recess and back, uh, the agenda at twelve forty-three P M, all members are currently present in person. The, I'm sorry, confused, I was trying to get through Hammond, um, which are twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, they, tan twenty-two and twenty-three, they appear to be consolidations, recommendations, um, but I would note that all are over six hundred. Uh, Jessica, any comment on that outside of cost savings? Okay. I'll entertain a motion regarding twenty-two and twenty-three, if we can take those together, if there's a motion.
Move to consolidate with respect to those twenty-two and twenty-three.
All right, uh, motion and a second motion by Miss Brandonberg, second by Miss Angerman, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, should anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Uh, motion fails, uh, for twenty-two and twenty-three, three to two. Next would be Highland.
That was a motion to consolidate.
Correct, motion failed, three to two. Um, I'm sorry if I misspoke, the motion to consolidate was defeated three to two. Um, next we have Highland.
No, then we have to go back to them individually. No, she was trying to say consider the two at the same time, right?
Correct, and we.
She wasn't saying to.
No, they were.
She wasn't saying to move forward with the, to, for the Secretary of State to consider, she was trying to combine these two, so it was only one vote.
Right.
Right.
You know, then to the Highland, we have to, we have to do four, five and, and six, seven individually then.
I guess maybe, would it be cleaner if we just make the motion as to twenty-two and then make the motion as to twenty-three?
Yeah, I was trying to speed things along, but, um, that's fine, so, um, we can take them individually. Uh, I'll just assume that the motion seconds were consistent, motion by Miss Brandonberg, second by Miss Angerman, to consolidate Hammond four, five and Hammond four eleven, which is tan twenty-two. Is there any discussion, just for the record, I'll note that both are over six hundred. Um, having, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, a vote, a vote yes, is to consolidate, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye, to forward the recommendation.
Yes, motion, uh, I'm sorry, all, all, uh, against?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Uh, now as to twenty-three, the motion by Miss Brandonberg, second by Miss Angerman regarding Hammond six, seven, and Hammond six fifteen would be to forward to the Secretary of State a recommendation to consolidate. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed, nay? Uh, motion fails, three to two, uh, next moving on to Highland, Highland eight and Highland twenty-four. Uh, is there a motion to consolidate?
Motion to consolidate forward to, um, Secretary.
Second.
Second by Miss Angerman, motion by Miss Brandonberg to forward the Secretary of State consolidation of Highland eight and twenty-four, I'd note for the record, both are over, um, seven hundred actually, but they're over six hundred. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of consolidation, signify by saying aye, and to forward it to the Secretary of State, I'm sorry, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion fails three to, uh, Highland eleven and Highland sixteen, looks like we're at, uh, I'd entertain a motion to consolidate and forward that recommendation to the Secretary of State.
Motion to consolidate with Highland eleven being under six hundred.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Angerman, motion by, um, uh, Miss Brandonberg, this does appear that, uh, Highland eleven is under six hundred. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to Hobart, uh, looks like twenty-five, uh, tan, I'm sorry, twenty-six tan versus. Uh-oh. All right. Oh, yes, I got you, okay, so tan twenty-six is Hobart seven and Hobart twelve, both appear to be over, well over six hundred, I should say, over six hundred. Uh, is there a motion? And it does create a city council split, that's what I'm seeing as well, I don't know if Jessica wants to be heard on this.
Right.
That's the same.
Same, okay, uh, is there, is any action needed on this?
And to consolidate on item twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion to consolidate twenty-six, I'm Miss Brandonberg, seconded by Miss Angerman. Um, any discussion, I would just note that the city council split concerns me as does the fact that they're both over six hundred. All in favor, I'm sorry, any other discussion? All in favor, should anybody saying aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion fails three to two, um, next, it looks like we've got blue thirty-one. Um, and it looks like that also is addressed in tan twenty-seven, potentially, is that right? Okay, so, um, looks like we've got a little bit of a discrepancy here, Michelle, do you want to go ahead and tell us why you want blue thirty-one?
Ten and twenty-one, it does create the school board split. Whereas on the nineteen and twenty-one decrees a city council and a school board split, I would rather deal with just the school board split than city council.
Okay, and just for the record, I am on, um, tab five. That is, um, page, starting on page one hundred.
End result is twenty-one, it's still being limited. I'm eliminated on their version, it's just a matter of people want my split options.
And you want a city council split versus just a school board split, okay, Jessica, do you want to address that issue that Michelle's, does not impact a, um, city council split, yours does, so if, outside of that, is there another rationale for choosing nineteen versus, um, twenty, twenty-one, I'm sorry, ten?
Yeah, so I would say if you add the numbers for, um, HO twenty-one and HR ten, you're at nineteen hundred and forty-four voters and that's not including the inactive, or maybe it is, I'm not sure if she did her numbers. Um, so if that's just active counts, you're wanting to bust it with the two thousand to be inactive potential, and you don't count the inactive when you're doing this.
Well, it looks like you guys have the same numbers, because you both have four seventy-one, so at least you're looking, it looks like you're looking at the same numbers, right? Jessica, for like.
Yes, for thirty-one, I, yes.
Over twenty-one.
For the twenty-one and the ten, you would have nineteen forty-four, and then for the, um, nineteen and twenty-one, you would have fourteen and seven six in terms of voters.
So this might be a situation where we combine and then split later because we're over two thousand. Which we want to try to avoid, but we do have a four seventy-one. Yeah, that's split, that city council split is what bothers me. Okay, um, any other questions for staff or discussion?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve thirty-one, uh, over twenty-one and over ten.
All right, motion to approve thirty-one and forward that recommendation to Secretary of State, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Miss Condolee Reardon, motion by Clark Brown, any further discussion? All those in favor, should anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, four to one carries. Um, now, twenty-seven?
I was nay.
Oh, you were a nay or a aye?
I was, I'm the nay.
You were a nay, I'm sorry, were you an aye?
I was a nay.
Whoa, I'm sorry, I heard it wrong, uh, motion carried three to two.
Just because I heard.
I did too.
It only goes to your nightly, sorry about the word.
No, I, I made it. I thought you thought it died. That's why I was confused.
Okay, so just, I just want to make sure everyone's vote counts as they wished, it sounds to me that Miss Angerman did want it to be a nay, so we will count it as a nay, three to two, motion carries. Um, is there a motion regarding tan twenty-seven?
I will make a motion to forward, um, consolidation of twenty-seven, which is Hobart nineteen and twenty-one, which keeps that number of total voters much smaller and probably would avoid us having to separate the two shortly thereafter.
Okay, we have a motion by Miss Brandonberg, seconded by Miss Angerman to approve consolidation, tan twenty-seven, which is Hobart nineteen and twenty-one, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion fails three to, um, next we have, we're moving into Munster. So this is tan thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four. Um, just for the record, I'll note that every one of these precincts are above six hundred, some are above seven hundred, and yet, uh, we're suggesting consolidation, so Jessica, you want to be heard on, on these, this is, uh, tan thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four.
Yeah, it's, it's fun, saving, to eliminate extra boards where possible, and, um, I think that's it for all of them, but I will look over it real quick.
Sure, any, uh, other questions for staff? Hearing none, I will take these individually or together if there is a motion.
I guess we'll go individually.
Okay, Jessica, one, I'm sorry, Jessica, you want to be, no, no, she just.
So one of them, um, not that I guess matters, but because we can do the voters later, the precincts later, or I'm sorry, the voting location later. Um, one of them for M fourteen and fifteen was to move it away from Elliott Elementary and move it into Grand Hammond, and they're both government buildings, but it's in a, in a sense to, um, help the voters out, to get people away from overparked precincts.
Okay, both have pretty good parking lots.
You know, if we're doing, if, if these were to pass, keep in mind the numbers for large precincts in the nine and eleven, love is larger, I'm just, we want just the lower number, just bring these up, or, or the rest, you got a number thirty-four, sixteen is smaller than twenty-one, if these were to pass.
Okay. Okay, uh, entertain a motion regarding tan thirty-one.
I will move to consolidate and forward thirty-one with the, um, M five as the name.
All right, um.
Second.
Motion by Miss Brandonberg, second by Miss Angerman, to consolidate Munster five and six, both over six hundred, any discuss, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye, I'm sorry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two, um, tan thirty-two?
For consolidation and forwarding with the name being Munster eleven.
Give a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Angerman, motion by Miss Brandonberg, to consolidate Munster nine and eleven, any further discussion? These are both over seven hundred, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails three to two, ten thirty-three?
Um, motion to consolidate M fourteen and fifteen with the name being M fourteen.
Have a motion by Miss Brandonberg, seconded by Miss Angerman, uh, to consolidate Munster fourteen and fifteen, uh, any discussions, for the record, both these are over six hundred, all those in favor, I'm sorry, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two, um, tab, tan thirty-four, Munster sixteen and twenty-one.
Motion to forward and consolidate M sixteen and M twenty-one with the name being M twenty-one.
Have a motion, Miss Brandonberg, to consolidate Munster sixteen and twenty-one and forward that recommendation to Secretary of State, seconded by Miss Angerman?
Yes.
And any discussion? They're also both over six hundred, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
I mean, no, hey, I'm sorry.
All right, I will do that again, any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, I've done that several times, uh, motion fails three to two, moving on to tan thirty-four, which is Mariville two thirty and thirty-eight, I'm sorry.
Thirty-five, number thirty-five.
Thank you, Diane, um, tan thirty-five, this is Mariville two thirty and thirty A.
That thirty and thirty A are actually one precinct, so that board is not under six hundred, because it's one precinct.
Okay. And that goes back to kind of the comments before, that the state sees it as one, even though there's a, voting is two, and then Jessica believes differently that it, it's two, I get it, okay, I just want to make sure for the record.
Yeah, I have to ask the question, that, why is it thirty-eight considered separate from thirty, in your opinion, can I ask that question, please? Why do you, why do you feel they're two, the thirty and thirty-eight, why you consider them two different precincts, is it one precinct committee persons?
I, then it goes back to, if I'm looking at the legislative directory, which we use to do things like this to set ballots and everything, it shows it as two separate precincts, if I look at active voter counts, it shows two different active voter counts. Again, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Sure, no, I get it.
She's saying, but just from the documents I'm looking at, I don't know.
And so the question I would have for you, Jessica, and I, I appreciate the fact that you're, you know, you're doing your best here and I know you're, you know, I'm not faulting you one bit. The question I have for you is, if Michelle is correct regarding this, would you still be recommending the consolidation if? Okay.
Consolidation to me. There is no separate precinct A according to SVRS or however it is determined that in the end, then no, I don't recommend any of the H's because there wouldn't be anything to.
Because they're over six hundred?
Well, even so, if the As, if they only exist in theory per se.
Right.
Then obviously there's nothing to condense on any of the As, whether it be Chicago.
Sure.
Mariville.
Okay, so in other words, if the, if the, if Michelle is correct that it's one precinct, you would not have recommended this consolidation, okay?
Not well, fully, I would still recommend the thirty combined with the two.
That's what I was asking. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, no, that's what I was asking, so you would still recommend consolidation if it was, even if it was just one precinct, you'd recommend two and thirty to be combined, got it, okay, that's what I needed to. Understood. Yeah, I mean, I think we're, we've already, we've already discussed that enough, I think, and I, I don't need to put them on the spot, so.
No, I, I just, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I just would like for them to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Come before this board.
Or, or I think what we need to make sure, what I would ask them to do is to, is to is to check with Secretary of State, maybe both can be on the call, or whoever you would call, I don't know who we call, you know, and just figure it out, so we're not, what I don't want, because I know you don't want this, is I don't want like a creation of another precinct, that, because I don't think anybody wants that.
With the sheet that I made, you would have worked out to at this point, on the front of it, it does say to eliminate all eight precincts.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, that's why when I say aye on the sheet, it's a possibility to be eliminated. But then there is a discrepancy on which way this goes, and to this point, we don't know a hundred percent which way it goes. At least I'm not a hundred percent sure which way.
Okay.
All right, well, I appreciate the discussion, motion.
I'll make a motion that if Maris, uh, Mariville thirty and thirty A are not consolidated, that they be consolidated, and further that, um, Mariville two be consolidated with Mariville thirty and thirty A.
And or thirty A. All right, there's a motion, uh, and a second, uh, motion by Miss Brandonberg, second by Miss Angerman regarding tan thirty-five, which is addressing the consolidation of Mariville two with Mariville thirty and or potentially thirty A. Any discussion?
Why I didn't talk to this one there, it doesn't make sense, but I, it's one, go ahead.
Okay, we, we've, I think we made that clear, um, at this point, any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, uh, of consolidating Mariville and forty, that's Secretary of State, um, of Mariville two and thirty and or thirty A, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Scandalary written? Thank you, uh, motion fails three to two. Uh, right, uh, next is tan six, Mariville eight, Mariville twenty-nine, both over six hundred, it shows, at least I'm showing a split in the town council district, which is a concern, Jessica, do you want to address anything else on this one?
It's actually the last one, um, if we're not, um, going to combine thirty with something, oh, well, I guess that answers the questions, but I don't think there's, I don't mean, sorry.
That's okay. It's all right, anything on Mariville eight or twenty-nine, which is tan, tan three cents?
It's, it's the same thing.
Okay. Um, right, is there any action that would like to be taken on this one, which would create a split in the town council district?
Motion to consolidate and, and forward.
All right, motion, I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to repeat Carly, uh, motion consolidating forward by Miss Brandonberg, seconded by Miss Angerman, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two, um, on to Mariville, I'm sorry, on to tan thirty-seven, which is Mariville eleven and Mariville nineteen. Onto Maryville, I'm sorry, onto Tan thirty-seven, which is Maryville eleven and Maryville nineteen, both appear to be over six hundred, and it also creates a split in the town council district. Jessica, anything else on these? We haven't heard, okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to combine Maryville eleven and nineteen and forward. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to combine, this is Tan thirty-eight, I'm sorry, Tan thirty-seven, Maryville eleven and nineteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
And that motion fails three to two. Moving on to town of Shererville. I heard, I heard a no, yeah. This is a, whoa, okay, Shererville two and Shererville twenty-six. This appears to both be well over six hundred, but Jessica?
Going further.
Yeah.
Did we address Lake Station at all? Because I don't feel like Station.
I don't, I do not.
So without, without, you know?
Oh, it's on the, it's on the green. Good? No, I get it, you don't want to miss anything. I appreciate the fact you want us to keep going here, because we're, we want to make sure we don't miss anything, because we do have a deadline of the first, and I appreciate both, I appreciate both Deanne, I'm sorry, Michelle and Jessica's work on this.
Thank you.
Bad old habits, old habits die hard.
I appreciate that.
All right, we are moving on to Shererville, I think, unless Jessica tells me otherwise. All right, Tan thirty-eight is Shererville two of eleven, twelve, and Shererville twenty-six is seven forty-nine. Jessica, anything to add to this one? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to consolidate two and twenty-six and forward.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Brandonberg, second by Ms. Angerman to consolidate these two precincts. Any discussion? And just note that these are well over six hundred voters. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two. Moving on to Tan thirty-nine, Shererville six and Shererville nineteen, both over six hundred. Is there a motion?
Motion to consolidate six and nineteen and forward.
Okay, motion by Ms. Brandonberg, second by Ms. Angerman. And any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor consolidation and forwarding, same to the Secretary of State, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two. Shererville, number Tan forty, Shererville eighteen and Shererville twenty-four. I have Shererville eighteen, seven ninety-five, Shererville twenty-four at eight fifty-five. I assume, unless Jessica raises her hand, we're good to go, Ms. Brandonberg.
Motion to forward and consolidate eighteen and twenty-four.
Second, a motion by Ms. Brandonberg, second by Ms. Angerman to consolidate. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two. Next is Tan forty-one, St. John one and St. John four. These also both have over six hundred. Is there a motion?
Motion to consolidate St. John one and four and forward.
Motion by Ms. Brandonberg, second by Ms. Angerman to, on St. John one and four to consolidate. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two. Moving down to West Creek Township one and two. It appears that one is at one sixty, and two is at fifteen forty-three, so we have a precinct well under the six hundred. Any discussion by staff?
West Creek one is Schneider. So it is a council split, which right now there is no cost savings, because they're already built with precinct two. When Jessica and I talked, I thought she says that they were going to remove this one, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is off. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Forty, Tan, for the record, Tan forty-two has been removed. Moving on to Whiting. Looks like both these have, Whiting one and Whiting four have over eight hundred each. Would create a split in the city council. Is there a motion on this?
Motion to consolidate Whiting one and four and forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Brandonberg, second by Ms. Angerman. Yeah, this one is a little bit confusing for me. Jessica, this was just for cost savings?
It's totally within one mile or less of each other.
Yeah, I mean, Whiting's a kind of a unique little place. And it's, it's pretty dense, so I, yeah, those are my only comments. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two. And the last is Winfield Township, is that, did I get that right? Or am I saying that?
W T is Winfield Township, yes.
My acronyms are still flowing, even as late hour.
You're pretty on point.
Winfield Township, this is Tan forty-four, Winfield Township two with Winfield Township five. Hearing nothing, no, I'm sorry, Jessica's not raising her hand, so, motion.
Consolidate Winfield Township two and five and forward.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Ms. Angerman, motion by Ms. Brandonberg to consolidate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor consolidation, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two.
Both to the legal limit. Both of those were addressed in one of our plans, and so it makes it easier, I just removed them.
Okay.
As for the plan, and making the address next year.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have on our map proposals. We've, unless there's, let's see, moving on to other old business. We've discussed that the twenty twenty-five annexes have already been addressed. Index of changes, that is tab seven, which I assume is just for reference. That's all that was on the agenda for, I take it? Yes, Jessica?
I had missed that.
It's okay.
One of the large precincts that need to be split, did we go through those?
Not sure.
At the beginning, you said you didn't issue it.
No, I don't, I just don't see them on the sheet of paper as where they voted on. Up at the top, I'm the active voters on the first page when they were agreed.
There's a split. We're good? It's okay. We have a deadline, I'd rather you guys both agree. It's okay. It's okay, no need to apologize. So, Ms. Brandonberg.
Apologize for interrupting.
You're not.
As for items one through four, I think at that point, there were some confusion when we were getting started as to how we were proceeding with all of these.
Can you give me a, like, are you saying blue?
I'm saying Tan, Tan items one through four.
Yeah, so I have no motions were made on those.
We backtrack and allow me to make a motion as to, just combine motion one, two, three, and four to pursue the proposed consolidation and forwarding.
I have no problem with that. Does any other member have a problem with going back on the agenda and addressing it? All right, hearing none. Ms. Brandonberg has made a motion to, and second by Ms. Angerman, to proceed with consolidation as listed in Tan one, two, three, and four. This affects Cal Township six and twelve, Crown Point two and thirty, Crown Point two and twenty-four, Crown Point thirteen and fourteen. Any discussion? Jessica?
For number two and three in Tan, I have the impression we agreed on those, am I wrong?
I have no motion on my notes.
Well, no, I'm sorry, I'm referring to Michelle myself. I, I thought we were okay with CP two.
And there was a word that I, I liked the way it looked, that once I found it had a split in the city council, that, that I was not.
Agreement on that, okay.
It's a split.
Okay.
Plus, in this case, it's the opposite of what we're talking about, really, you're having census blocks, is the same exactly that you were saying, no, I'm saying exactly.
Got it. Yes, first.
That's exactly what we did with the St. John Township, since we split off precincts to not create new ones.
Split off census blocks. That's okay, it's fine, correct.
And the three that were larger, that we needed to split up, because they were too large for the twenty-five hundred, so we did split some of those, and I was okay with that.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, and the large precincts sometimes.
Yeah, so I guess this go, sorry for Beth here. So I guess what I would say is that, like, goes to the bigger question that Carly brought up, which is like, can we do that or not? I mean, I'm hoping we can, and that this is all okay, because you guys worked hard on some of those bigger ones to do it. I just, it's just out there, so I'm sure we can, hopefully we can, but I'm sure we're going to find it.
I think it's just under a different code cite.
Well, for the record's sake, with those, I think it's three of them, we'll have to address those immediately if the census block isn't correct, because those are not negotiable, they're all three over the legal.
Got it, okay. After we're done, after we adjourn, it's back on your guys' shoulders. All right, we have a motion to consolidate Tan one, two, three, and four as presented, and send those down to the Secretary of State. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, those, those four fail two, three to two. Okay, back to the agenda, index of changes, I assume that's just for our reference, thank you. Any other old business? Hearing none, new business, we have a special election that Lake Central School Corp got in under the wire. And we do have before us, Mr. Tolbert, the approved language from the DLGF. We have all the paperwork from the Lakes, Lakes Central School Corporation.
So the meeting then called, the board has to accept calls or.
And this is that meeting?
This is that meeting.
All right. Entertained a motion to accept the materials presented by the Lake Central School Corporation and the DLGF, and to place this matter on the ballot pursuant to state statute.
That moved.
Second.
More from Ms. Angerman, second by Clerk Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, oh, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Along with that, sorry.
Motion carries.
To go along with that, to create the special election, the state has to do it. They created, and then we put the question down. So we hurried up and created a town authorization form based on approval of both Hanover and the Senate interested, asking for them to put the, to create the election. So this goes in tandem with the, that, but I did not have this as a submission to you.
Okay, Mr. Tolbert, do we need to approve that? Or is that just part of our, what we just did?
I mean, we've done authorizations in the past, just as a matter of fact, but.
So let's let Jessica take a look at it. Okay. We will, we're good, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the authorization as presented, as it pertains to Lake Central and Hanover Township Schools.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Clerk Brown, second by Ms. Angerman, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the record, those last two votes were unanimous, I don't know if it's, if we need to do that or not, but. Okay. All right, make notes that they were unanimous, for the record. Any other new business? I don't see any correspondence. I don't see any, Council report, Mr. Tolbert. I want to ask Ms. Brandonberg for one today. Purchase orders, I don't see any. Next meeting of this board is August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM, right here in the Commissioner's courtroom. I see we've successfully got rid of all public during the last three hours, so, no public comment? Yes.
Mr. Mellon asked a question in regards to purchase orders that were the same amount when they were the same.
Correct.
We were originally thinking that they, yes, they are two separate ones, but they are not a monthly one, one was for the one quarter, and one was for the other. So just for clarification, those were quarterly purchases, while those are not a monthly.
All right, Jessica, you'll make sure Mr. Mellon knows that? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologize.
That's all right, Ms. Brandonberg.
One question. I was going to raise this as council report, and I don't know.
We'll go back to that, council report.
We've had an ongoing, for a couple of months, disagreement about how to handle three CFA matters that were voted on in May, the May meeting. There were three matters where the board voted to impose a fine, which is a shall requirement to oppose, and then to reduce the fine, which is a requirement of a unanimous vote of the entire board membership to reduce. At that point in time in May, two of the board members, Mike Mellon and John Reed, were not present. Mr. Tolbert and I have both analyzed this, we have disagreement as to it. My ongoing recommendation is to place those three matters back onto the agenda for August for the board to consider the matters and make the reduction pursuant to the legal statutory requirement that the vote occur pursuant to the requirement of, quote, unanimous vote of all, of the full, entire membership. Entire membership, the correct language is unanimous vote of the entire membership. I, now that I'm, you know, sitting here as a proxy today, I don't know if I can simply make that motion. I suspect I know how that's going to go, but to, to get some resolution as to what we're doing with it, and so that it doesn't continue dragging on and on.
Yeah.
I'd like to pursue that.
Okay, yeah, I get, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
But. The council's report.
Yeah.
I like the chance to respond to that, just briefly.
Yeah, I just, for the record, let's make sure that we agree we're in council report, I think that's where we're at, so I'll take Ms. Brandonberg's comments as part of her, as council report. And if there's an issue, Mr. Angerman can make, and Mr. Tolbert. Yes. Back to your council report, yes, we're in council report.
Yeah, I know, being this attorney Brandonberg, I always want to give you the, on this one, we sound philosophically skewed in terms of what entire membership means. So I think what's important, at least for what I would want to say of the board's considerations, and even in their future, is the entire membership language is cited as to when you have board members that walk out, red flags walking out. So even though you have a statute that says entire membership and has the unanimous requirement, there's nothing in the statute that deals with the issue of a walkout, and there's no case law in Indiana that deals specifically with any kind of situation where we were presented in terms of the walking. So what Attorney Brandonberg and I did was, normally when you don't have case law in point, under Indiana law, you can look at other jurisdictions for what's called persuasive authority to see how other jurisdictions bound on that. So we have both did that analysis, and there are cases that suggest that the entire membership portion, when you vote, does not include votes that disqualify themselves. So my position, and I believe this, this is one of the issues to be framed. So the issue with whether or not the two members that walk out should be considered in the entire membership language when vote, and they disqualify themselves. And I've found cases that say that they are not included when disqualified themselves. I think that Attorney Brandonberg's analysis makes a kind of a distinction, because the case deals with a recusal of a board member that had an interest in the vote. But my position is tomato, tomato. Disqualification is the disqualification. If you step out and refuse yourself, or you walk out of there, you shouldn't necessarily be considered in the vote.
Right.
So that is the issue framed, and like I said, it's Arizona, we look at Arizona, I think there's some cases in West Virginia, it's, it's all over the place, but, you know, my position is that type of membership, if you post it disqualified themselves by walking out, and there's also public policy considerations for why you probably wouldn't want to do that. So that.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Brandonberg, do you want to have the last word on that?
Thank you, just very briefly, there were two Texas cases and an Arizona case. The language in those statutes was different, it was a whole, all members or whole membership. It was not unanimous vote of the entire membership, so there were statutory language differences first and foremost. But in addition, each of those cases, the critical language in each of those out-of-state cases was that, that the courts were looking to the members who were, quote, in S and qualified, in S meaning in actual existence, and qualified meaning unqualified. In every single one of those cases, there had been a board member who stated, I cannot vote on this because I have an interest that disqualifies me. I am therefore essentially disqualified from acting as a member on this vote. If that were the case here, if Mike or John were disqualified because of an interest If that were the case here, if Mike or John were disqualified because of an interest that they had in that vote, I would probably agree with Michael that that is, or with Mr. Tolbert, that that's decent analysis to consider, though it be out-of-state persuasive precedent only, and still with the statutory language differences. I, I honestly believe, you know, if I were a judge looking at this, I would go based on the clear language of the statute. I wouldn't look beyond that. And unanimous vote of entire membership means unanimous vote of entire membership. I don't see how to read it a different way. So I think that the board, it would be doing this the right way pursuant to the statute, to put it back on the agenda and give the entire membership the opportunity to vote on it. Otherwise, we have clear language in Indiana that's looked at circumstances where the statutory language isn't followed, where the courts say, "You are taking an ultra vires action as a board," and that motion is void, not voidable. So it, it's essentially a null as it stands right now, in my legal opinion.
Yeah, I guess, I guess being an attorney, I got to weigh in on this a little bit. Sorry, I'm sure everybody wants to go to lunch. But I'm gonna blame Carly for bringing it up late.
You can blame me.
Don't blame me for, don't blame me for my comments, but, you know, it's interesting. It's definitely an interesting discussion. I throw something else in there that, you know, the law doesn't like to create absurd results. I think that, from my perspective, the board acted. I think it acted appropriately at the time. Couple of things I would note, that you, you can disqualify yourself, I would argue. And this doesn't take any, I'm not making any opinion on what our fellow board members did that day. I think they, they chose to do what they did. It's fine. It's their, their choice. Secondly, I don't like the idea of any single board member holding this board hostage. I think courts and legislature all would like boards to do their work. And I don't like the idea of either through recusal or being sick and not appointing a proxy, or whatever the case may be, where it could be interpreted as, well, you didn't have the entire membership there, so therefore, your vote didn't count. I guess I would like to also say that it would be interesting for one of the parties that was affected to come and say that our action was voidable, or void, I'm sorry, void. Because I think we gave them a break on their fines. I guess if they want to come back and have it be reconsidered, they can take our action up. And anybody could take our action up and, I guess, let the court decide whether, to me, this is a public policy. It ends up being a public policy. The legislature, even though I would agree with Ms. Brandonberg that this seems to be very clear language, and it would be something that usually the courts would say, oh, it's just the clear language of the statute. This is what, this is what it means. And you don't have, you don't have to interpret what it means. That in this case, there are some significant public policy concerns that I think would weigh heavily in the court looking at those public policy concerns and making its decision. And so I believe that the board's actions were appropriate at the time, notwithstanding the fact that I didn't know at the time, and I don't think any of us did about that, that language of the statute. But I appreciate the discussion. I think we've got great lawyers. I would never say otherwise. And I just wanted you to know where I, where I sit on it. We can, at this point, I'm not going to put it on the agenda in August. If there's a motion to do so, we can, I guess, take that up. Generally, I, Chairman, along with our director and co-director, make the agenda, but I'm happy to leave it to the board's decision if somebody wants to make that motion. But if not, we can kind of continue the discussion and talk about it when everybody's here next month. I'm happy to do that, too.
I'll make the motion.
Right.
I mean, it's in state code, as it's in state code here in Indiana. It's persuasive, I get it. But I'm assuming that's county or state level, because that's not federal. And so I'll go with state. I'll go with Indiana, and I'll make that motion. I don't know if I can second it, but I guess I.
You can second it. Yeah, we'll let you second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I must have missed Leanne's point on federal versus state or local, but I, I just assume we're all talking about the same statute, which is a state statute.
Yeah, I think she's saying was the case law.
Oh, I assumed it was state. Yeah, I know, I see that. She's big time in us. Big time. She's big time in us. I get it. Well, yeah.
Mr. Tolbert, you've joined the club.
Brown.
Well, Mr. Chair, we've sat here for several hours, and as you know, there were some things that were on our agenda that I don't necessarily approve of, but I stayed here.
Mm-hmm.
And I voted because that is my responsibility as a board member. All of us are either elected or formed into this board, and it's our responsibilities to do our job. Whether we agree on what has to be done or not, it's not, it's a immediate issue. So while I have enjoyed working with my colleagues, I just don't think that was the appropriate thing to get up and walk out of the meeting. So I could not vote to put this back on the agenda, under no circumstances. If you're in Congress and there's a vote and you're not there, you're not there. You miss your vote. If you're down at the State House, not there, you miss your vote. So if you sit on the council, there's, say, seven members, as long as four of them show up, votes are still cast. So my issue with this whole thing is that we should sit here and address the issues that come before us, because that's what our responsibility is. We can't pick and choose what we like and don't like, or what we should stay and deal with or not, because today was a very uncomfortable day for me. Extremely uncomfortable, because we had to make some cuts in my community and combine some things, but I was doing it based on what was put in front of me, and I addressed that. And I'd like for the other board members to remember that, because that's exactly what we're here for. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Brown. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of placing the mentioned, aforementioned items on the agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion fails. All right, thank you for that discussion. We don't have any purchase orders. Again, I would mention this before, but I'll mention it. Next meeting of this board is the regular meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, here in the Commissioners' courtroom at ten AM. I don't believe there's any public comment, because there's no public here. Motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned at one twenty-eight. Thanks, everybody, for that.
I'd like to speak to you.
You, I know you do. I know you do. You don't want to go back to work.
Oh, no, I'm actually off today.
Good for you.
I am.
Is it a federal holiday, one of those?
I haven't, you know, that's fair. I'm feeling a little, a little long than I planned on.
Thanks, Jenny. Thanks for, thanks for putting up with us for three and a half hours.
Thirty.
Yeah, I guess you didn't.
Sorry.
Good point.